This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Council members Bagley, Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Can it stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak at final call, publicly invited to be heard, or on any public hearing items. So now we've got the minutes to approve for May 9. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move we approve the minutes of May 9.
All right, that's been moved in second. Let's vote. And that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent. Now we have the May 23 minutes to approve. Can I get a motion to approve the May 23? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage also of the May 23 minutes.
All right, that's been moved in second. Councilmember Peck, did you want to make any comments before that? All right, let's vote.
Vote that didn't work.
Okay, and that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent. I heard from Councilmember Bagley and he had a work thing that came up unexpectedly. He's got to deal with so he may be quite late tonight. So, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, I think we're on agenda revisions and submissions of documents.
Yeah.
Right? Is this where we make our motions?
Yeah.
All right, then I'd like to do that. Last Friday, Councilmember Peck called for an executive session concerning the alleged incident at the Suites, and Councilmember Christensen agreed that we needed this closed-door session. Quite frankly, this shocked me, and if ever there was a need for complete transparency, this would be it. We have absolutely no reason at this time to have any discussion about this issue behind closed doors. I told the city manager that this was a very bad idea and I would not participate, and several other council members also had concerns, and Councilmember Peck eventually withdrew her request. So that this doesn't happen again, I would like to move that council not have any closed-door sessions surrounding the alleged incident at the Suites unless we are advised to do so by our city attorney.
I think we're all in agreement with that. Councilmember Christensen?
I also withdrew mine. There were reasons that we were asking for that, but we've both withdrawn that, and it has nothing to do with being transparent. I would strongly urge the Longmont Housing Authority to conduct an independent investigation into the incident at the Suites. And I would also like City Attorney May to clarify the relationship between the Longmont Housing Authority and the city, just briefly, for the public.
Mayor and council Eugene May, City Attorney. So I reviewed the housing authority statute. They are a statutory creature, quasi-governmental entity. City council appoints and removes the commissioners, and beyond that, city has no other oversight role of the housing authority.
Thank you. And I would like to invite Chief Butler to comment if he would like to, or if he doesn't want to comment at this time. That's fine.
It's hard to turn down any of your invitations, Councilmember Christensen. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Mike Butler, Public Safety Chief. So, the incident with the Longmont Housing Association and the searches that took place, when I found out about what was going on through a letter that was written by the Longmont Housing Association staff, immediately put a stop to it. This is not something that we've done, and it's not something we're going to be doing in the future. There were some things that came up after I found out about that in terms of the acts themselves, and I know that there is an ongoing third-party investigation that's being conducted, and we're going to have to wait for that investigation to be completed before we know all of the information and all of the facts. So I'm not going to speculate on any of that at this point. However, I will talk about the intention of the officers in terms of going in to the Suites, and our intentions were very much aligned with our philosophical culture, our practices, our policies. Over the last few years, you may know, we've been in front of you before and we've spoken about it, we are using our criminal justice system less and less to try to solve social and health issues in our community. And we realize that the invoking of our criminal justice system often disenfranchises and marginalizes people even more. If they are suffering with an addiction, or if they're suffering with a mental health issue, or another kind of health issue where potentially there's some criminal laws or ordinances that pertain to that, we have developed other ways of doing business within public safety in order to deal with those. You may or may not be familiar with the Edge program. The Edge program is a program in which we have mental health service providers who actually work out of public safety, and when our staff goes on a mental health call, or call potentially involving someone's mental health, we do have an Edge, a trained mental health service provider respond as well to those incidents. And the goal of that response is to ensure that if we can transfer or move into the mental health system versus the criminal justice system, a person who potentially is struggling with their mental or emotional health and has committed a crime, that we would, in fact, defer them to the mental health system. You're all familiar with restorative justice. It's been around for a long time. Longmont Public Safety has referred over 4,500 people who have committed crimes to the restorative justice process. And in our minds, it's a significant reason why our community is as safe as it is because the recidivism rates coming out of restorative justice are so low. And then we recently implemented our Angel Initiative that started January 1 of this year, and we've had numerous people walk through our doors, say that they want treatment, and I'm happy to say that we've been able to find everybody treatment. And so when our officers went in to the Suites, they went in a mode, they were very clear with the Longmont Housing Association, that they weren't going to be there in an enforcement role. They were going to be there as police officers, but in a role in which if they encountered people who were struggling with potential addiction, that they would make referrals to the Angel Initiative, and we know that that happened. What I can't sit here and do is make excuses for what happened in terms of how that played out. We are going to examine and analyze what we could do differently with these circumstances in the future. This is something we have to figure out because frankly, from what we heard and from what we know, there are some issues with illicit narcotics at the Suites. There are stories and indications of use sales, and on April 2 of this year, someone died of a heroin overdose. So, management there was concerned, and they called us, and we did what we did. But in the future, we're going to be doing things differently in terms of how that plays out. I also want to say that in the past, maybe in the distant past, when we get intelligence related to illicit narcotic sales especially, that it's not unusual, what wouldn't have been unusual, and it's not unusual now for a lot of police departments, to basically do an undercover sting kind of operation, and to try to gather intelligence and information so that we could identify people who were distributing and selling drugs. In our minds, drug sellers, they prey on the vulnerabilities of others, and the vulnerability is an addiction. And so that's something that we're going to sustain in terms of how we do business, but very much focused on large distribution organizations. Recently, we did have an operation, Operation Stiletto, in which we've arrested probably, I think we have arrest warrants indictments for 35 to 40 people, all selling large amounts of illicit narcotics. So, if we operated that way, I just want you all to know, and I certainly want the community to know, that we probably could have developed information for a criminal case, maybe in a number of instances, and potentially arrested people for either possession and/or distribution of narcotics. And for those of us who know about these things, we know that if someone is arrested for possession of a narcotic, that's a felony. Of an illicit narcotic, that's a felony. And I don't know for sure, because I don't know the housing authority's rules, but it wouldn't be unusual in a crime-free family multi-housing facility, which the Suites are, for those folks to be evicted. And if they're evicted, frankly, this is one of their last chances for housing. And if they're evicted and potentially convicted of a crime, their capacity to gain gainful employment becomes pretty close to zero in our community. So, that's one of the reasons why we've changed our philosophy, and it's one of the reasons why we're trying to figure out how we can deal with especially folks who are just possessing and using drugs differently, because we don't want to further disenfranchise and marginalize them. We don't want them not to have a viable opportunity to find gainful employment and to live in this community in a way that helps them, and that they can live a more healthy life. That's why we have the Angel Initiative. And just to let you all know again, we're probably up to 75 addiction treatment service providers that are willing to help, and we've already, we think, put in place assets of close to $300,000 to $350,000 of addiction treatment in our community. So, I don't want this to sound like an excuse for anything. I just want you to know why our officers at some level went in the way they did, and it's not going to happen again in the future. So, I think that's more or less the statement I wanted to make. I will say, I know there's been quite a bit of finger pointing, and as these kinds of things happen, that's what happens. There's a lot of people who want to sign blame, they want to find fault, and maybe in certain instances, certain institutions want to market fear. And that's understandable at some level, but I think the bigger picture here for us in this whole deal is what do we do with folks who are struggling with addiction, wherever they're at, whether they're in the Suites or wherever they're at. And I'm hoping soon we can get to a point where that becomes more the issue, albeit I understand that we're at where we're at. We'll let the investigation play out, and we'll see where that all goes, and we will take stock at that point. So I am open for questions, if you have any. Otherwise, thank you for the invitation. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Councilmember Finley, you know, you made a motion. It was second. I think, and we can vote on that. I just wanted to say that I think the entire council is in total agreement with you, but we can go ahead and still vote on it if you want to. Go ahead. Yeah, Gabe Santos, second. So.
The motion was that council not have any closed-door sessions surrounding the alleged incident at the Suites unless we are advised to do so by our city attorney.
All right, we've got a motion. It's been seconded. Let's vote. And that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent.
And I do have something else.
Okay. Councilmember Finley?
All of us have been on council for a while now. Even Joan's been here over a year, and lately, we've seen all of us kind of play fast and loose with some of our rules and procedures. Over and over again, our city attorney has diligently reminded us not to reply all to emails because it may be considered a meeting pursuant to the Colorado Open Meetings law, subject to notice and open meeting requirements. And yet, we saw it again this week. And I also want to remind council members that they can ask our staff questions at any time, and they should if they needed additional information, but under no circumstances should council members individually direct staff to do anything. I've seen this creep into emails as well. You are one of seven, and it takes a majority of council members to direct staff on policy issues, as we often are reminded by Councilmember Santos. Therefore, I'd like to make another motion that the rules of procedure be read at the beginning of each year to remind council and their advisors of these rules. I know that it's been a source of frustration for Councilmember Santos, and this week, it was a source of frustration for me as well. So that would be my motion, that each year, we review the rules and procedures so that they're fresh in our minds and we don't see these repeated violations of them.
So I've got a question for you. When you say each year, you mean after each election cycle, or January 1, or?
We could do it either way. Which would you prefer?
I don't care. It's your motion.
Let's say the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Second.
Excuse me, am I not being interrupting on you?
All right. Councilmember Finley, or Christensen, excuse me.
Is the motion that these be read out loud at council, or is that we read them privately, which I think most of us do, a lot? which I think most of us do, a lot?
Councilmember Finley? I think you meant to read it out loud.
To read it out loud, at the beginning of the year, so that everyone, not just council members, but also those in the audience that may be advising council members, what those rules are, so that we don't continue to see them broken.
Okay. Councilmember Peck?
I think this is a bad idea. To be honest, this remark is targeting me. I get that. But there have been many times in this council chamber, that I would like to have called Robert's Rules of Order, called other people out on Robert's Rules of Order, but did not do that. So, I think that we need to all just be responsible for our own behavior. We're adults. I'm going to be abstaining from this vote.
All right, we got a motion, it was seconded by Councilmember Santos. Let's vote. Okay, well, it's three to three, so it fails. Okay? And the dissenters were Councilmember Christiansen, Councilmember Moore, and Councilmember Peck. All right. So now, city manager, is there a report?
I think there was one more item that was discussed, and I don't know if there was a motion about the communication to the Longmont Housing Authority.
Yeah.
I'm not clear on whether or not there was council direction on that.
Oh, yeah. Should we vote on or give you consent? I mean, basically, Councilmember Christiansen made a motion, but I guess we haven't voted on that, yeah, so.
I don't know if there was a second.
Yeah, I'll second her motion. Can you go ahead and repeat your original motion, relative to?
I would move that council strongly urge the Longmont Housing Authority to have a, to conduct an independent investigation about the incidents at the suites.
That's separate from our investigation?
Yes, separate from ours. Or group together, but an independent investigation, rather than investigating themselves.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Moore?
So, exactly what is the motion?
The motion is to strong, that council strongly urge the Longmont Housing Authority to have an independent investigation conducted about the incidents in April at the suites.
Councilmember Santos? Yeah, okay. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, I think that, I mean, they are a separate entity, and I don't think, it's our place to be doing anything along that line, in my, so I won't be supporting this motion.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Moore. They're their own entity. It looks like we're forcing them to do this. I'm sorry. The way it seems, is it looks like we're forcing them to do something. I get encouraging them to do whatever they need to do. They are their own entity. We're the city of Longmont. If they, however they go about to choose to do whatever they need to do, that's up to them. I can't support this. I mean, it just looks like we're pressuring people, and, you know.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Actually, I did talk to our staff about this, asking them, because I needed to have clarification on the distance between LHA and city council, what was our relationship, and it's an appointed board. So, we do have the right to request that they do an outside investigation, third-party investigation. They don't have to do it, it's just a request that we're making, since we appointed the board. We're asking them to do that. So, I'll be supporting. I don't think that that's too much to ask, that they do that. They get to do what they want, they don't have to follow it.
Well, they probably are going to do it anyway, but Councilmember Moore?
We have to remember that some of these could relate around privacy issues that relate to leases or employees, so I just think it's inappropriate to be involved with that at all.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. All right, we've got a motion, it's been seconded. Okay, that fails two to four with Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Coombs, Councilmember Santos, and Councilmember Finley dissenting. I kind of feel that they're probably going to do the right thing anyway, so.
Mayor of council, we do have a brief update also from Dale Radamaker. There was a question last week about where we are in the status of what we communicated regarding the evaluation of the plugged and abandoned wells. And so, Dale has a brief update for you on that topic.
Okay.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Dale Radamaker, general manager of Public Works and Natural Resources. I think the key word here is brief, but I did want to give the council an update on what we're doing. And essentially, the city is continuing to take a comprehensive approach to reviewing and examining the existing plugged and abandoned wells that are located within our city limits. That work was actually initiated back in 2012 and 2013, and was documented in the TerraCon Research Summary Report, which is posted on the city's website. That report has been available to the public now for over four years, and it's still on the website, and it's a good resource for folks to go to that are interested in the issue. I also want to start out by saying, we have no information at this point to suggest that there's any immediate public safety or issue with any of the plugged and abandoned wells. Nevertheless, out of a sense of caution of public health and safety, the city has developed what I take to be sort of the A-team, a really strong team of city staff from several divisions within Public Works and Natural Resources, including engineering, natural resources, environmental and environmental services, staff from our planning and development services team, staff from the CMO, in particular, our local government designee to the COGCC, staff from the city attorney's office, and staff from community and neighborhood resources, and finally, staff from public safety. So again, we are trying to bring together all the folks that certainly have expertise and insight into the issue. That team is also going to have technical support from TerraCon consultants, who we have been working with for a number of years. And we're also talking to other consultants that have some new and innovative ways of not only looking at the situation, but also monitoring it over time. In particular, I want to point out that Jason Elkins, who's one of the new engineers in our staff, will be sort of heading up the effort. Jason has a lot of experience in the oil and gas industry, and certainly understands it from a technical perspective. And so, when you start talking about the different types of facilities, Jason understands that. We've also requested and received the proposals to undertake additional field testing of both water, air, and soil at many of the sites. Our initial focus is going to be on the plugged and abandoned wells that are located near or in the urbanized areas of the city, as opposed to those plugged and abandoned wells that are, for instance, out on farm fields east of the city. We will look at those as well, but our first effort is going to look at the ones that are closer into the urbanized area. The approach at each of the sites is going to be customized to that site, because there are site conditions that warrant different approaches to getting the information and analyzing it. We currently have about twenty-one wells that are plugged and abandoned within the city limits. Some of those wells were abandoned and plugged over fifty years ago. Actually, the oldest one is in 1960, the most recent one being last year with the Ryder Well. Several of those wells are on city-owned property and are not in close proximity to homes or businesses, while others are on private property that are in closer proximity. Of those, about ten or eleven are the ones that we have the most interest at this point, due to their location and proximity to structures. Right now, we're refining the proposals, we're in discussions with TerraCon. We do anticipate commencing with the work, likely starting at the Ryder Well, our favorite well, to begin, to get underway with. I think we'll be underway with that over the next several weeks, and starting to collect the additional information. I also want to report that we have worked with top operating, as they were ordered to locate and test their flow lines on their existing producing wells, on those flow lines that are within one thousand feet of a structure. That was part of the governor's order, and that really only dealt with three wells. And the reports are that there weren't any issues found. Staff will obviously engage with the public, as well as the private property owners, as we begin this effort. And we will continue to provide council with periodic updates, as well as the public, as we move through the effort. And with that, I'll take any quick questions that you may have.
Great job. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to move on to our proclamation. So, Marty Moore, the executive director of Out Boulder, and others are here to accept the proclamation that I'm going to read. It's a proclamation designating the week of June nineteenth through the twenty-fourth, 2017, as Longmont Pride Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas each year during the month of June, residents of Longmont join together to celebrate and honor history, diversity, and the resiliency of the LGBTQ communities through Longmont Pride Week. And whereas Longmont has a diverse LGBTQ community that includes people of many ethnicities, religions, and professions, and whereas the diversity is a community asset that enhances and enriches the lives of all community members, and whereas the city of Longmont reflects its commitment to the promotion and protection of human rights of LGBTQ residents. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Alcooms, mayor by the virtue of authority vested in me and a city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of June nineteenth through the twenty-fourth, 2017, as Longmont Pride Week in Longmont, and encourage all of our citizens to respect and honor our diverse community, and celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. So, Marty, would you like to come down and say a few words?
Mayor Coombs, council, thank you very much. Really excited for the upcoming Pride Week. Want to thank you very much for the proclamation, and hope to see many of you there, including in the dunk tank on the twenty-fourth. We have been working in Boulder County for over twenty years, but almost a year ago, on Pride Day, June twenty-fourth, is when we opened our first office here in Longmont. So, it's going to be a really special day for us. We're grateful to the citizens of Longmont. It's been a really great year, and the number of people that we've worked with, helped through tough situations, those numbers are high. And I also want to give a special shout-out to our community members. Superintendent Hadad and the school district has been an important community member as we tackle the tough issues of bullying and suicide in our community, and I couldn't be prouder of the relationship we've built. And thank you to the city of Longmont, and to all of you, for all the work you do for inclusivity in our community.
I don't know. I guess, maybe if you're not going to be there to knock me into the dunk tank twenty times, I might go.
I'm out of town, man.
The next proclamation, let's see, is a designation of Bike Week. So, this is a proclamation, and it's going to be accepted by city staff, so I'll go ahead and take a proclamation, proclamation designating June 2017 as Bike Month, excuse me, Bike Month in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas the city of Longmont has a longstanding commitment to bicycling as a viable transportation mode, as well as key recreational activities, and whereas the city has once again been designated a silver-level bicycle-friendly community for the period of 2016 through 2020, and whereas a number of local sponsors have joined with the city and zagsters to start the first bike share system for Longmont residents, workers, and visitors, and whereas the city is recently opened one bicycle pedestrian underpass in the southwest part of the city, and will soon open a second one, and whereas the city of Longmont is committed to increasing awareness of bicycling as a healthier and more environmentally-friendly alternative to driving, and whereas the city of Longmont will celebrate the culmination of Bike Month with Bike to Work Day, Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, 2017. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Alcooms, mayor by the virtue of authority vested in me and a city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim June 2017 as Bike Month in Longmont, and I encourage all citizens in the community to support Bike Month and Bike to Work Day on June twenty-eighth, 2017, and I would invite all residents to enjoy the many benefits of bicycling throughout the month of June in Longmont, Colorado, and also all summer long. So, is, who would like to, from the city, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, my name is Phil Greenwald, transportation planner with the city of Longmont's Planning and Development Services Department. Just wanted to, that's great, I just wanted to point out a few things. You did mention that June twenty-eighth is Bike to Work Day, so that's great. We're going to have a number of stations around the city, giving out free breakfast, free coffee. I think we're even doing a possible free beer event after work on June twenty-eighth as well, at different breweries around town. Look that up online, those will be out there. We also want to say that we're not just opening, we didn't just open one underpass. That was our twenty-fourth underpass that we opened up in April, and we're going to open up our twenty-fifth here in, at the end of June, hopefully culminating with this event. So, we're pretty excited about that. And also here today is, hopefully, is Justin Malar, and will be helping us celebrate the idea that we did get the silver certificate again for, the silver level for bicycle-friendly communities. So, I just invite all the bicyclists in Longmont who are here, I know there's a few of them to come up and get their picture taken with the mayor.
All right. Thank you.
One, two, three. Let me do one more, please. Okay, one, two, three.
All right, so now, we're on to first call, public invited to be heard, and John Coe is the first person, so please come down and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is John Coe, 1899 Third Avenue, and I provided you all a copy of this land use. Some of you may have had a chance to reference it, and for the audience, it's basically the twentieth anniversary of this land use, and it's in my neighborhood, 1899 Third Avenue, regarding the alleyway that goes down there to Spruce Street. And my, I'm sorry for approaching on something that's not on your agenda today, but I'm here to volunteer that, to resolve this, I'm willing to forfeit the strip of my property that would make this a legal width right-of-way. I've already talked to Brian Schumacher of the Land Use Department about this, and of course, it would take an action from you guys to initiate this, but that would allow this to be a twenty-five-foot wide right-of-way, and potentially allow some infill in the neighborhood, but that's not the main purpose of this. but that's not the main purpose of this. And that's all I have to say on this issue, but in regard to the issue of our city and the news media, I'd just like to say that I consider Mike Butler beyond approach reproach and that it seemed like they're giving him a little bit of a hard time, but he's kept our city safe for many, many years, and we're lucky to have him. And I don't think he should, you know, you guys take a little bit of the heat and you guys probably signed up for it, but Mike Butler is somebody who's done a great job, and we hope to have him for a bit longer. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all agree with you. Bob Norris?
Mayor and council members and audience, I'm Bob Norris. I live at 532 Ryder Ridge Drive, and I had a few concerns about what happened at the Suites. Now, I'll admit I've been gone for the most of the last two weeks, and so haven't read a lot of what's been in the newspapers, and I also know when you read in the newspapers, you don't get everything out of it. So let me just first start out by saying I have a lot of respect for our police department, and in particular for Chief Butler, as he's always been very supportive of the entire community. But one of my concerns of what happened at the Suites is those are people that usually can't defend themselves and protect themselves, particularly kind of around legal issues. So those are the people that we really ought to be careful that we protect their constitutional rights. And the other thing, I'm a little confused about who's doing reviews of this now, because I've heard from Chief Butler, I've heard from council member Christensen, and I heard that the council's reviewing it. My rather insistence is that the review be done by somebody that doesn't have a game in this thing, is completely independent. I think that's better for everybody. I was pleased to hear Chief Butler say that they're just not going to do something like that again, but I think it all needs to be cleared up for the people that were involved in that. So, thank you. And one other announcement, me surprised, Councilman Santos, that there's a certain golf tournament coming up on July 21st for the Hispanic Education Foundation. Since he's organizing and running it, he's probably aware of it, so thank you. We always need more players.
Well, I can assure you it's going to be an independent investigation. Next up is Mike Chamberlain.
Hi, mayor and council. My name is Bob Miller. I'm just kidding. My name is Mike Chamberlain. Somebody said I look like Bob Miller. I wish I did, but I don't. Anyway, I'm here on the Greenway.
What's your address, please?
Oh, address, 518 East 16th Avenue, Longmont, Colorado, 80504, the new one. Okay, we have a problem with the rough-and-ready green ditch again. It shouldn't be a problem, but it just keeps coming coming back since 2006. You all should have in front of you the promise made by Mayor Purnak way back when, and it was taken care of then and has been taken care of since then. And then came in Mayor Brian Baum. He also took care of it up to this point. And then there's you, mayor, you have taken care of it, whether you know it or not, for the last up until just this, this, what do you call it here? Is this fall? No, this spring. Okay. So anyway, I'm begging you to turn the water back on until we get this resolved, because we went through this before and the grass all died, weeds everywhere, and we'll end up going through it again, and I know you will come to see the right thing done. So I will leave that up to you. Now, I got a few notes I had to write down while I came in, because I'm, I don't remember shit stuff at all, so, excuse me. Okay, and I need my glasses. Okay. Oh, I went to my son's birthday party. Can you give me a second here? Okay, there, notes. And they're not here. Okay, anyway, since I'm wasting the council's time, as you see, we got we've got a big, big problem, and it we've been lied to unintentionally or intentionally, I don't know. I would like an investigation brought in on this since it's come up so many times. I noticed you have investigations for the police officers and stuff, but they're making me come in and wasting, not wasting my time, spending my time trying to save this park from what we've done for the last 15 years. Okay? So please, if I got my notes, I was, it was really good. I was really going to blow you away, but if you will, please, I have a, I called in for an appointment with you, and I called in for an appointment with Brian Bagley, because he's our award one. So I would like to get this started, get it rolling, but I'm begging you to turn the water back on and get that, keep that grass green. I've gone over there and mowed it myself now for for the last four weeks, okay, because that was was promised to us. It would be mowed every, once a week. It would not not grow over six inches. All these are promises that are verifiable. We can go back through and ask the meeting, the peoples at the meetings and everything. Thank you for not stopping the email stuff, because the emails are what's saving our park right now.
Okay, your three minutes are up when the red light comes on or something. Thank you.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, well, good. I couldn't have read it anyway all that fast, but but please, please turn the water back on.
Jason Lamb?
My name's Jason Lamb. I live at 842 Bowen Street here in Longmont. I appeared in front of the city council two years ago on June 30th, 2015, about the Longmont Housing Authority, me and my wife got there. We brought evidence to you that the Longmont Authority, Housing Authority was not treating us fairly. We also had documentation of many residents there that felt like they could not be treated fairly and were not able to say anything because they would lose their housing. Longmont Housing Authority, back then, I realized, was not a very honest and transparent agency. They lied to us about the mold issue repeatedly, and eventually they did get their way and force us out of there. I lost my Section 8 housing because of Longmont Housing Authority, and we had to fight to get our deposit back. I feel like, in a way, when we presented this to you, we had no other options. We went to attorneys, we went to everybody we could to try to get attention about how Longmont Housing Authority was treating people. Alma Collins stood in front of you that same day, and she said that people in housing need to be treated with dignity and that the actions that it would increase, it would decrease in interactions with law enforcement. I had more interactions with law enforcement when I lived at Longmont Housing Authority than I did the previous three years of my life. So there's a lot of contradictions in what Longmont Housing Authority has told you, and I really think that you guys should go back and watch June 6th, June 30th, 2015, because we stated all this to you, my wife did, and also there has been live Facebook. My friend, a friend of mine contacted me who was there this year. He's left the state because he's in fear of retaliation. He had a live Facebook feed on April 6th. His name's Mike Butler. At 9:51 a.m., he recorded the Longmont Police Department coming into his house without a warrant. He put the phone right underneath the door. He told them he didn't want them to come in. He told them that he was fine, that he wanted, he was in bed and he was sleeping, and they still forced their way in. So there's lots of evidence out there. It's not a he said, she said, like you've been quoted and saying, mayor. It's a many, many people have been saying for many, many years, and one agency that is corrupt has said otherwise. And I really think if you go back and look at the evidence that is there, you'll find that it's so. Thank you.
Roger Jurgens?
Mayor Coombs and council, first of all, I want to thank Mayor Coombs. He's been very responsive to my phone calls to him and asking questions about the subject I'm talking about. The infrastructure and maintenance, is there already some excess built into this yearly in our water system to do maintenance for some of the projects we're talking about with the increase in water rates for a three-year period of time? Seems to me that there should have been something built in for many years to help to pay for this. There's also a monthly service charge on my bill. I don't know what a monthly service charge is, but there's one for electricity, water, and waste. I went back to 2006. In the last 10 years, the service charge has increased 150%. The water rate has increased increased 100%. Waste is in that part of it has increased almost 100%. And I would like to know what this is about, and is the service charge, is that part of maintenance? If there is an increase in water rates for three years, which has been talked about for the infrastructure repair, will it then be reduced back to the routine yearly increase starting in 2016, or is it going to stay at that 30 or more percent increase that we have gotten over a three-year period of time? I think it ought to be, go back to where it was. I think the whole increase in the infrastructure and the Windy Gap should be paid for by bonds. Why should we be quote taxed over a three-year period of time to pay for everything that's happened in the past and things that are going to happen in the future? I think it ought to be spread out over a number of years, so all citizens in Longmont have their chance of paying for it, rather than just people who live here now that would pay for it in a three-year period of time. I thank the mayor and I thank the council for the time.
Thank you. Roger Ling?
My address, in case you didn't get it, is 1556 Sumner Street.
Thank you.
Mayor and city council, my name's Roger Lang. I reside at 800 Briarwood Lane in Longmont. I'm here to talk about the financing of the Windy Gap Firming Project and the associated proposed water rate increases necessary to fund the project. At the present time, our water rates are set to increase 30% over the next three years and could almost double with the present financing projections. I'd like to offer two scenarios for making the financing of the Windy Gap Firming Project more palatable for your constituents. The first scenario I would propose is there are three options to finance, three options were financed for financing Windy Gap were proposed in a survey that was sent out to 3,000 ratepayers, and I appreciate you sending out that survey, by the way. All three contained a cash component, plus two of the three had debt financing along with cash. All three proposed rate increases and all, all three proposed rate increases were opposed by over 50% of the completed surveys. Given that, I'd like to suggest over and above the three, a fourth option that has no cash component and is 100% debt financed without any additional increases in water rates. This option would minimize the water rate increases over three years to about 30%, which is still very significant for Longmont ratepayers. Without this no cash option, the total rate increase could approach doubling the present rate. Second scenario, there's been a lot of discussion about what quantity of acre feet is appropriate to purchase to meet Longmont's build-out for the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan. The staff stated 6,000 acre feet is adequate, but the water board is stating that 10,000 acre feet is the number we should be targeting. I would like to suggest that US City Council ask staff for water rate numbers that would support a purchase of a compromised number of 8,000 acre feet. It might be surprising to see what rate increases would be needed at that level, which could be minimal and would not be so punitive for the public to handle. Both of these scenarios would go a long ways towards minimizing the financial burden of an already 30% water increase, along with other city utility rate increases. Many of your constituents are on fixed incomes, and any increases are very difficult for them to handle. I would hope you would seriously consider both the proposed scenarios, with the possible outcome that the financing of the Windy Gap Farming Project would be one that we could all reasonably afford. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Daria Laverne?
Mayor Coombs, council, my name is Daria Laverne. I reside at 429 Emery Street. I am also here, thank you to the two gentlemen before me about the Windy Gap proposal, the increase. They pretty much said what I'm feeling and what I think about the project, but one of the things that is important to consider is that even though the town is growing and we do probably need water, water built out in the future, to put that burden on families with children who are barely making it with their salaries right now, or senior citizens like myself that are on fixed income, will really put a stress on us being able to buy food, medications, and other necessary items that, you know, we've already, we've already tried to limit our water use. I make a very good effort in that area, but to add more to that is going to be really difficult for a lot of people in this community. And I don't need to remind you that some of you are up for election soon, and that's going to make a big difference, the way people feel about voting for people again. Anyone that votes for this, people are going to look at that and say, they didn't vote in my best interest. Why should I bring them back in again or get someone who has the same policies? So I just, I just really think that's important to consider the burden on the citizens. It's extremely, asking extremely a lot for us citizens, so please consider, you know, lowering it or making some other, I mean, if it had been five, six, seven, eight percent, I would have said, sure, that's no problem, I can do that. And I think a lot of citizens would feel that way, too, but the increase is astronomical in my estimation, and that doesn't include all the other electricity, sewer, and trash that we pay up on top of that as well. Thanks for your consideration.
Gordon Pedro?
Mayor and council, Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive. Tonight, your general business agenda is chock full of bad news for Longmont residents. Outrageous water rate increases, a large growth in assessed property values, and a possible 75% increase in public safety sales tax rates will be hard for most residents to accept since they will not see a corresponding increase in their annual incomes, and for those on fixed income for the rest of their lives. By the end of your meeting last week, it was clear that a majority of this council is prepared to force upon water users a huge unnecessary rate increase, even though you are aware that other options are available to meet unanticipated water demands in the future. Even more shocking to this resident is the fact that several of you are prepared to clobber current residents with huge rate hikes for water that may never be needed, and using your own words, not for 40 or 50 years. In my opinion, this is not prudent planning. It is speculation at the expense of your current residents. If you insist on ignoring your staff's recommendation to participate in the Chimney Hollow Storage Project at 6,000 acre feet level, please at least consider the proposal put forth by Roger Lang in his opinion piece in Monday's Times Call, Bond of the Project. Bonding will somewhat mitigate rate shock for water users. If you are correct that acquiring 10,000 acre feet of storage is appropriate for our city at this time, your voters will approve the bonds. If you are incorrect, voters will tell you to revert back to staff recommendation. A few years ago, the city council asked voters to look at the pros and cons of using revenue bonds to build a high-speed internet network named Nextlight. Voters enthusiastically approved. Why are you not willing to trust your voters on the water issue? The downside of you imposing huge water rate increases on every resident in town is that they may, that may kill their receptiveness to vote in favor of bonds for public facilities or to increase sales tax rates for public safety. If I were a council member facing the financial challenges before you tonight, I would be seeking ways to build alliances with residents, not hitting them with a huge unnecessary water rate increase. My last point pertains to the Longmont Housing Authority. Over the past few days, information presented by Kyle Clark on Next has been embarrassing. Council members, you are responsible for appointing the members of the Longmont Housing Authority Board. If the current LHA board members do not understand that all people have certain guaranteed rights under the Constitution, or that public agencies such as the Housing Authority must follow the Colorado Opening Records Act, you should dismiss them all and appoint board members who will follow the Constitution and state statute. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Karen Dyke at 708 Hayden Court. Mayor Coombs and Council members, I'm here speaking on behalf of Longmont Ready for 100, a subcommittee of Sustainable Resilient Longmont. We want to let you know about our grassroots group. We're working to gain community support to move Longmont to 100 percent renewable energy. Earlier this month, President Trump pulled the US out of the Paris Accords, leaving the United States almost alone country, not ready to commit to the very small gains that are called for in the agreement. What we know is that even if we did stay in the agreement, those measures weren't fast enough and didn't go far enough to prevent the major impacts of climate change. While the US pulls back, other countries, including India and China, are making rapid gains in the transition to renewable energy. We are not discouraged by the US withdrawal from the Paris Accords. There are now many groups working across the country in cities and towns to ensure that the United States, as one of the world's largest contributors of CO2, works to curtail their emissions. Cities across the US are moving to renewable energy. Some cities like Madison, Wisconsin, and Aspen, Colorado, are known liberal cities and are working because of environmental concerns. Some, like Georgetown, Texas, and Abida Springs, Louisiana, are moving to renewable energy because of the economic benefits. Pueblo, Colorado, is an example of a city looking to benefit the citizens by moving to more affordable energy. We had a rally this evening before this to let people know about the grassroots action in this city. Our conversations with the community let us, tell us that people here are excited about renewable energy. We are educating the community that moving to renewable energy makes sense, not just for future climate, but for cleaner air. We're telling folks about the economic sense it makes to use renewable energy with predictable low rates and new safer, cleaner jobs. We are also planning a party to celebrate the launch of this important project. You and everyone else is invited to join us this Saturday from 3:00 to 6:00 at 300 Suns. Stop by to hear some music and some speakers. I'll end with a quote from a Tea Party mayor of Georgetown, Texas, who says, "The energy initiatives amounts to a no-brainer. We're going to provide cost certainty on our electricity for 25 or 30 years, and there are no pollutants going back into the atmosphere. Everyone wins on this deal." So we're ready to move to 100 percent renewable energy. Mayor Coombs, I'm leaving you some information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that ends the first call, publicly invited to be heard. So now we'll move on to our consent agenda. Or actually, the ordinance on the, yeah, go ahead.
Mayor Coombs, your first item on consent is 8A, Ordinance 2017-35, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2017. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for June 27. Item 8B is Resolution 2017-55, approving the 2017 intergovernmental agreement between the City and Boulder County for environmental sustainability grant funding. Item 8C is Resolution 2017-56, approving the Second Amendment to the Redevelopment and Reimbursement Agreement between the City of Longmont, the Longmont Downtown Development Authority, and PFP Longmont Holdings I, LLC, for the South Main Station and adjoining properties project. And staff would like to pull Item C for a short presentation.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd move the consent agenda less Item C.
All right, the consent agenda minus Item C. It's been moved and seconded. We need one more person to vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent.
Mayor Coombs, your first item on second reading is Ordinance 2017-30, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Longmont Electric and Broadband Utility Enterprise Revenue Bonds Series 2017. And Jim Golden has a short presentation.
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. So tonight on second reading, you have an ordinance in front of you to approve 7,265,000 dollars of electric and broadband utility enterprise bonds. As we've reported to you earlier in May, the bonds are needed to, to finance the construction of the broadband network, and actually, we are really reimbursing the utility with 100 percent of these dollars. The bonds are going to be, going to sell two weeks from today. We're estimating that we will be seeing an interest rate of around 2.9 percent, give or take some. And the annual payment is estimated at $740,000 currently. It begins in 2018, and it also will follow the, the timing of the first bond issue from three years ago, and will go through 2029. It's going to be a public sale in two weeks. We did today receive the rating on the bonds from Standard and Poor's, and the rating is in A rating, which is the same rating as we had on, on the bond, the first issue three years ago. A rating with a stable outlook. I can report that we did have a presentation to the rating agency about a week and a half ago, I believe, and it certainly went a lot better than it did three years ago, when there was a lot of doubt about our efforts to move into this arena. Nevertheless, certain, certainly still some concerns about bringing the utility into a stronger cash, cash position. The rating agency did express the potential that if things continue in the right direction, maybe in a couple of years, that might be able to be upgraded. So we look forward to potentially doing that down the road. So the ordinance tonight was prepared by our Bond Council with Butler and Snow. We have our financial advisor in the audience, Jim Manier, from First Southwest. And the attachments to the communication tonight include the official statement for the bonds, which is put together by staff, as, as well as the Bond Council or Disclosure Council at Butler Snow. And that's the most important document in the sale of the bonds, is what we use to disclose to the purchasers about the investment and the sale that we're, we're making available to them. So if you have any questions, I'm here, as well as Jim Manier. I do want to point out that, going back to that rating presentation, I did want to credit Tom Roneyonis and Kate Medina did a great job of presenting this information about our utility to the, to the rating agency, and it was very well received. They were very impressed with what we've done so far, so.
So my question is, the track that we're going on, and, you know, it's been very, very successful. We get three or four years down the road, is, will there be an opportunity to perhaps redo these bonds and get a double A rating? Or what's our opportunities going forward if we're highly successful in getting even lower interest rates than the 2.9 or?
Mayor Coombs, as I mentioned, there's a possibility that we could get an upgrade on, on the bonds, on all the bonds down the road, but that, since the bonds are already sold, that'd only be for secondary type of trading impact. It won't impact the interest rates to the City of Longmont at that point in time, and, and, you know, the Electric and Broadband Utility have no plans to issue any other debt, so I guess that will not be a factor for us in issuing debt. But it still would be, we would like to see that rating raised to that level, which is where all of our other enterprise debt is.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So Jim, do you think that this final input of this money for the bonds will finish the Nextlight project? Is that, do you think?
Finished, I didn't catch the last part you said.
This is for, to finish the Nextlight or to put into the Nextlight project? Will this infusion of money finish the Nextlight project?
This is, this is the most, the maximum amount of debt that we can issue, so the rest of the project is being finished through the reserves of the Electric and Broadband Utility. So as I said, this is really reimbursing the reserves that we used to date, but it is going to otherwise be completed through reserves that we have on hand.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I'm going to open up the public hearing on the Ordinance 2017-30. Is anybody from the public would like to speak at this time? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on the Ordinance 2017-30. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to move Ordinance 2017-30.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is Ordinance 2017-31, a bill for an ordinance directing city staff to process an application for outside water service on Quail Road at parcel number 13151400032, which is actually the St. Green Valley School District's Innovation Center. I believe Ken Hewson has a short presentation on this.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Ken Hewson, Water Resources Manager with City of Longmont. Just wanted to briefly summarize the water tap request before you today, and, and also to kind of provide a little information for the public about really what, what happens tonight. The St. Green Valley School District has requested an outside water tap for a proposed construction of what they term the Innovation Center, which is a campus that would be constructed on the south side of Quail, just east of our museum and Recreation Center. For outside water taps, it's, it's really a two-step process. The first step is what we have before us today. An ordinance, what our city charter requires is a finding by City Council that there's a benefit to the inhabitants of the city. Tonight, we won't be actually approving the outside water tap. We'll merely be accepting the statement of benefit. Once the City Council has found that benefit, then the city code requires the outside water tap to go to Water Board, who will review it for its impact on the system and it, what water rights the applicant would propose to provide. And then after that, a formal application and agreement for an outside water tap will come back to City Council. This was slightly different. The applicants have indicated that, in fact, they have already applied for annexation. Unfortunately, because of the, the timing of annexation versus the timing when they would like to get started construction, they really needed to get the water tap. A couple of reasons. One is that they would like, they have a school calendar to meet in fall of 2018, so if they don't get started in construction in July, they can't get, get it open in time for the school session. But to start construction, especially to start any, going vertical with any combustible materials, you know, it's required that there be fire protection and a water supply. So in essence, this, this would be a short-term outside water tap if approved by council, and if the, ultimately, if the annexation's approved, because then, at that point, it'll, it'll be a normal inside water tap. Also tonight, with, with the St. Green Valley School District, we have Patty Keonis, who can probably give, if you have any questions on what the Innovation Center is, she could probably answer those questions much better than I could, but in essence, it's, it's currently housed, I believe, off the Sunset Campus, and they provide a unique educational opportunity for Longmont kids who want to go through that program. And so, once constructed, it would actually be directly benefiting some of the students from Longmont who would attend that facility. I think that's really the public benefit that's, that's being proposed here. And so, if there are no questions, I'll, I'll be happy to let you open the public hearing.
I don't see any questions. I think we all understand what the great benefits there are to supporting our school district, but I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on Ordinance 2017-31? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2017-31.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is Ordinance 2017-32, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 11.04 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding a traffic safety surcharge. Phil Greenwald is here to make this presentation.
Evening, Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Phil Greenwald, again. Transportation Planner with the City of Longmont's Development, or Planning and Development Services Department, excuse me. This is really quick. This is something that was started in June of 2014. The City Council passed the ordinance to allow the collection of a surcharge on certain traffic violations for the Traffic Safety Fund. We came back to you on April 4th of this year and asked about your thoughts on that Traffic Safety Fund and that surcharge. You came back with, to us and said you wanted us to continue the Traffic Safety Surcharge for five more years, in five-year, in a five-year increment instead of the two original, and reduce the cost of the surcharge from $10 to $5, and apply that surcharge to all traffic violations, rather than a selection of violations as before. So this is, this ordinance is before you tonight. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2017-32. Is anybody from the public would like to speak on this ordinance? I guess, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, Members of Council. I get to use my new address tonight, 1512 Fleming Drive, up at 66 Ann Francis, so. I'm just here to speak in favor of the, of the, the item in front of you this evening, the Transportation Safety Fund. I think that it's a good fund that the city has in order to be able to provide biking and walking education and those sorts of things, and I think the ordinance, as updated by staff, achieves those different things. So I just wanted to say that I support it, and I hope that you do, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else I'd like to speak? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would go ahead and move Ordinance 2017-32.
All right, that's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Moore. And that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is Ordinance 2017-33, a bill for an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 9.50 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding illegal methamphetamine laboratories. We do not have a planned presentation on this, but staff is in the audience to answer questions.
Is there any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? Councilmember Christensen.
Well, I would like to know, actually, what is entailed in mitigating this and bringing this, the housing stock that's been contaminated back to livability? Because I, I really don't know, and I'm just, I know it's extensive, and I, I just, out of curiosity, would like to know.
Is someone, I guess Commander Jeff Satter is going to try to answer.
Jeff Satter from Longmont Police Department. I'm the deputy chief. So I am not a mitigation specialist, but I can say that the costs of mitigation vary depending on the use within the home. So it can include from ripping out all the carpet, ripping out all the drywall, down to the studs and rebuilding it from the inside, or it can be as simple as a room-to-room, depending on an amount of contamination. And right now, there's about 30 homes, I believe, in the community that were discovered during a, a sale or some sort of testing that went on in the community.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2017-33. Is there any from the public that would like to speak? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2017-33.
All right, that's been moved and by Councilmember Santos, seconded by Councilmember Finley. Let's vote. Let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent.
Mayor Coombs, ordinance 2017-34 is a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 16.08 of the Longmont Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2017 edition of the National Electric Code. And Jeremy is here with a short presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Jeremy Tamlin, the Assistant Chief Billion Official, Planning and Development Services. We are proposing the amendment of the new edition of the National Electric Code, the 2017. We are not proposing any new amendments than what we had in the 2014 version that we have currently adopted. I do not have any presentation for you tonight, but I'm here if there's any questions.
Okay, is there anybody from council that has any questions? I think we're fine with it, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on ordinance 2017-34. Is anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on ordinance 2017-34. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move passage of ordinance 2017-34.
All right, that's been, motion's been made by Councilmember Finley and seconded by Councilmember Moore. Let's vote. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent.
Mayor Coombs, the next item is the one that was pulled from consent, and it's Resolution 2017-56. David Starnes will make a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. David Starnes, Redevelopment Manager. So tonight before you is a resolution for your consideration to approve the Second Amendment to the redevelopment and reimbursement agreement between the City of Longmont, the Longmont Downtown Development Authority, and PFP Longmont Holdings, One LLC, for the Butterball Redevelopment Phase One project. So while the developer continues to make significant progress on this project, including investment of over $9 million to date in property acquisition, demolition, cleanup, and development plan costs, they are requesting an amendment to extend the startup construction date for the 150 main improvements, and that's the South Main Station project, from December 1st, 2016, to December 31st, 2017 of this year. The deadlines for the renovation of 210 Emery Street and 322nd Avenue improvements remain unchanged from the original agreement. The primary reasons for this request is to accommodate a revised schedule to finalize development plan approvals for the project and to finalize project financing. So this amendment also includes a contribution of an additional $400,000 by the developer toward the First and Emery Road improvements for a total of $900,000 of the total estimated 1.8 million for these improvements. The city has budgeted the full 1.8 million estimated cost for the First and Emery improvements in the street fund and is shown in the approved CIP along with the funding contribution of $900,000 from the developer. So the council communication details additional information on developers' accomplishments to date, including amount invested by both the city and the developer and key elements of this amendment. And I should also note that this amendment was approved by the LDDA Board of Directors, since this is a three-party agreement, at their most recent board meeting on May 24th. Brian Baer, the representative from the Development Group, is here tonight also to provide an update on progress, and we are both available to answer any questions you may have. Brian?
Is there any questions, council? Okay. Go ahead and make your presentation.
Uh, Mayor, council, city council, this is Brian Baer, 7552 North 83rd Street and representative of 150 Main, the ownership group for Butterball Property. I don't have a presentation, just really an update. The last time I got up to give you an update, I think, was in the fourth quarter last year. And we talked, I spoke about the capital markets and the challenges in the capital markets, and we also talked about the progress of the approvals. Markets still challenging these days, but in the past four months, we've put together a group that we feel really good about, confident to move the project forward, to complete the financing. That is predicated on getting our approvals done, which are almost there. We have passed some major milestones in the last quarter of getting our planning approved, three of the four buildings approved for building permit, and we're still waiting on final approval for site plan and PIP, which is, I believe, imminent. We're working through some final details with Public Works to get that done in hopes that we finalize it by the end of this month. If that does happen, the current schedule and plan has us wrapping up our financial package in July and then starting into the horizontal construction in the fall, which will allow us to meet the deadline of December 30th, December 31st of vertical construction. As I presented in December, the project is the initial project that we all talked about, so four-story residential with retail along Main Street, and so none of that's changed. So we kind of went full circle on our design and came back to the original design, which I'm pleased with, because I believe it was the right design. So if all things go to plan, as of today, we will be starting in the fall, and you'll see buildings coming out of the ground before the end of the year.
Okay, great.
Happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Well, I do know that capital markets have kind of changed from, and so it's good that the project's still going forward, so. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Brian, I'm really excited to hear this news. Been waiting for you to start the construction, so congratulations to all of us.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Resolution 2017-56.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. And that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent. Thank you. Why don't we take a 10-minute break? Councilmember?[1014.82]
Okay, can everybody take their seats and we'll resume our meeting?
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the funding challenges in future budgets. And I'm Jim, I believe, was going to start this off.
I'm sorry. Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. So, as Valerie identified, this is funding challenges in future budgets. And we did talk to you all last September about a number of these issues during the 2017 budget presentations. What we tried to do at that point in time is identify within the CIP as well as our operating budget, what were our unfunded needs and how we were really challenged to be able to fund those into the future. And I'm going to review a little bit of that information from last September. And also, we're going to try to bring that up to date tonight. And since September, staff has worked on developing out some of these estimates and costs, particularly in the public safety area. And we wanted to review that with you tonight. And then we also want to talk about some potential options for the council to consider and going forward into the future. So, what we have, we had unfunded CIP projects, basically in the Public Improvement Fund regarding infrastructure repair and replacement. And then we also did identify some ongoing needs in the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund. So, we have a bond issue that was originally issued in 2000 or so for the Quail Campus and Roosevelt Park Projects improvements. And that bond will be paying off in two years, May of 2019. So, in putting together the CIP for 2017 through 2021, staff proposed a $26.5 million bond issue that would basically slot into the Public Improvement Fund. We currently are paying $2.7 million of debt service expense on the bond that expires in two years. That's our annual debt amount. And so, in the proposed, or the adopted CIP for '17 through '21, we proposed a bond in 2019 that would be issued in '19 and begin to have debt service in 2020. It was at that point at a lower amount, closer to $2.1 million per year, is what we were projecting based on $26.5 million of infrastructure repair and replacement projects. And we had 10 or so projects identified. They are included here on the next two slides and also within your communication, Fire Station Number Six replacement, Fire Station Number Two replacement and renovation, the Civic Center rehabilitation at $4.9 million, Safety and Justice Rehabilitation, Library rehabilitation, Facilities Condition Assessments and Rehabilitation, U Creek Maintenance Facility, Twin Peaks Irrigation System, Sunset Irrigation System, and then the Centennial Pool renovation, and finally Gulf Irrigation Rehabilitation and Replacement. So, these are the numbers that are within the 2017 to '21 CIP, so as we adopted them at that point in time. So, as you're aware, we came to you earlier this year regarding the Civic Center Rehabilitation Project and changes in scope due to information that we found out about the tension slab here at the Civic Center. We had to make adjustments in the Public Improvement Fund to be able to fund that project and the repair of that slab at $4 million. And part of those, that $4 million came from $2.4 million of cash funded Civic Center Rehabilitation projects. So, we instead had to defer that $2.4 million of repairs. And our recommendation at that time was to move that into the bond, the proposed bond in 2019. So, that begins to change what the Public Improvement Fund will look like into the future. And it'll need to be adjusted in bringing forward the CIP for '18 through '22. Proposed bond would increase to $29.1 million. And that's including issuance costs. So, based on the original project cost that we had identified, $26.5 million plus the $2.4 million that we're moving into here and some estimated issuance costs there. And then we're going to need to resize the debt service, which we will also do in the proposed CIP. We'll wait for the most current information we can put together for the market rates, as well as we will continue to refine some of these projects. And we're trying to see if there are some changes that we can make in some of the areas to reduce the size of the cost, particularly in the Gulf area. So, then we also talked about the unfunded challenges in the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund. In the General Fund, we had identified all of our unfunded requests in 2017's budget. We had nine and two, 9.275 FTE requests, Level Two requests of $248,000. Level Two is ongoing type request that Level One has to be worked into our budget. Or whether we fund it or not, we have to pay at Level Two is a next level of need that we have. We have the last final budget reset gap of about $300,000, which we're looking to try to fix in our next budget. We had affordable housing funding gap. We wanted to try, the council's goal was to raise that ongoing funding to $1 million. So, there was $460,000 left to get us there. We've talked in the last year or more about moving the funding for employee pay at 102% of market. That would have a $490,000 cost to the General Fund. And then our unfunded one-time expenses for 2017 were $1.1 million in the General Fund. In the Public Safety Fund, the unfunded needs there, we had 16 FTE requested for, this is again unfunded for '17. We had unfunded Level Two requests of $618,000 and one-time requests of over $1.8 million. So, I think right now, what I'd like to do is probably, now I'm going to go a little bit further here, Jeff, and then I'll get you up here. So, wanted to first talk about how we would hope or propose to deal with the General Fund unfunded challenges. So, we do anticipate that we will see increased property tax and sales tax revenue in the 2018 budget. You know, we are currently in the beginning of putting the 2018 proposed budget together. Just received all of the requests from the departments earlier this month. And so, we're doing a lot of review and processing. City Manager will be meeting with all the departments in the end of this month to review those budget requests. In the meantime, in Finance, we're working on updating a lot of the ongoing costs in the salary and benefits area and things like that. So, we're trying to also get ready to review revenues so that we can project them for 2018. So, at this point in time, we've not projected those revenues. Try to wait as long as we can on the major ones such as sales tax so that we can get the latest information. So, at this point in time, I don't have an estimate for either one of these revenue sources. What I do know with property tax, from the information that we've received from Boulder County, is that our values increased about 20%. And that's exclusive of business personal property tax, which is on a different calendar than the rest of the appraisal information, so that is not currently available. And of course, this is the first values that have been issued. And so, we'll go through a review process, which can typically go nowhere but down as it goes through the appeals process and such. So, it's, 20% growth is what we have for our residential and commercial today, based on those initial estimates. But that's also before the change in the assessment ratio for residential. So, that has a little bit of an impact of lowering as well. So, just to give you a sense of what type of property tax revenue change we may be seeing in 2018. And as you, if you read my email every month, you are probably aware, I sent earlier this week, I believe, or last week, that we had a, through the first four months of the year, we have a 24% increase in sales and use tax. Quite a number of anomalies in there. And we also have a few sales tax generators that are lapsed in their first full year, that we just are finished with our first full year of Amazon. We'll be finished with our first full year of Sam's in a couple of months, Sam's Club. And by the end of the year with Whole Foods Market. So, major generators will begin to, you know, trail off a little bit. So, really, that 24%, I mean, it has nowhere to go but down, in my opinion. And so, we'll be taking all of that into consideration as we make our projections. But I can certainly tell you that we will have more sales tax and property tax available to us in building the budget for 2018, which is going to be helpful. Affordable housing, there's a talk about a countywide initiative possibility to consider a affordable housing tax. And so, what we're suggesting at this point in time is to see where that goes and whether that moves forward during the 2018 election process. And if it does not, typically, as we go through the budget and drop, let me go back to the property tax issue. As you recall, we don't ever find out our final property tax assessed valuation till late November, after we've already adopted our budget. We will, we will try to maximize our projections as much as possible, but not necessarily. We won't budget them as expenditure until we know that it's there. So, there will be some undesigned property tax dollars in that proposed budget, which could be utilized for affordable housing if the initiative doesn't come to place. And if it does actually come forward from a countywide effort, then instead, we might recommend a consideration of using that undesigned property tax to increase that emergency reserve that we've been trying to reach our goal with for a couple of years now.
Councilmember Finley, did you want to ask a question?
I just had a quick question. You mentioned that the ratio would change for property tax. Why is that?
The residential ratio will change from 7.96, I believe, to 7.2%. So, that would be the assessed value percentage of the actual value of property. And that's under the Gallagher Amendment that had to be changed. It's statewide change that took place in this most recent legislature. Sure. And so, I think we're going to now move, so I think what we, I'll just, before I introduce Jeff to take you through the public safety needs, what we did is we met with the public safety after the council gave us some feedback in September. We met with the department and asked the command staff to take a close look at the public safety needs over the long term, maybe potentially through build-out to see if we were going to consider any sort of change or increase to the public safety sales tax that we try to make it one that would last us a long time. We asked them to review those needs over longer term. They did come up with a three-year projection of FTE phasing in of about 43 FTE. And I'll let Jeff explain exactly how that fits in. But it's, I think, trying to bring them up to a certain level of service. And then after that, we're trying to anticipate a normal growth after that of about 3 FTE per year. So, now, I will, I don't know if it's Mike or Jeff's going to take this, but I'll turn it, and then when they're done, I will wrap up the rest of this presentation, so.
Thanks, Jim. Again, good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Mike Butler, Public Safety Chief. Thanks for the opportunity to have this conversation with you. We did have one back in September with you. And we're going to be presenting some similar material with some additions that you did not hear about in September. But basically, this conversation is around the issues of safety, issues of workload, and issues of growth. And just to remind council what we said back in September, when we initially passed the first phase of that public safety tax back in 2006, 2007, we were, the police were slated to get 32 new positions. Well, the public safety tax could not afford that. It could only afford 25 positions. And so, part of our requests that you're seeing here is to catch up what the initial public safety tax did not do. And so, you're going to see figures along the lines of, we have actually fewer police officers now than we did 10 years ago. But you're also going to see a huge population increase, and there's been a huge influx in our workload. And so, Jeff's going to talk about that. We're also going to talk about some needs in fire in terms of being able to address some significant issues that we have and a need in OEM in terms of being able to replace someone who I believe right now is grant-funded, and in terms of being able to do recovery, funding recovery from our floods and beyond. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, thank you. I have about a 20-slide presentation, and some of this you have seen. And I will go quickly because I know everybody is busy tonight. So, much of this data was gathered by Dr. Elise Fleischer early on, our crime analyst, Matt Lee, and then I had some help from Michelle Webb also today. And so, much of that data's been ongoing. As you can see from our population estimates, that our population's now approaching approximately 95,000 people in our community. That's based on a Planning and Development Services estimate based on 36,818 homes. As you know, we have a number of apartment complexes going in. We have another residences going in our community. So, we're going to just see, keep, continue to see our population increase. As Chief Butler stated, that in 2008, we were at 142 officers. Because of the recession, we dropped down to 137 officers. And we remained at that level until last year, when you guys gave us five additional officers. And they have since finished training, and they actually just hit the streets about a week ago. So, they're out on the streets on their own now. So, this is comparison with just some of the other cities. Boulder is to the left of Longmont. Fort Collins is to the left or right of Boulder. And then, I'm sorry, Boulder's to the right of Longmont. We're all the way to the left. And then Thornton is all the way to the right. Is it the other way around on your chart?
Usually.
So, we're all, we're the lowest numbers over there. So, these are our requests that we have made. We have police officer positions, detective positions, communications positions that we're going to talk about. We're at a critical need in our communication center right now. Armor, some CSOs that will take pressure off our traffic unit to do accidents so they can help with enforcement, animal control, fire prevention specialists. I can go through the list. But as you can see, we built it out over three years and include the addition of the firefighters in 2020. And we stayed, it's very difficult, we could not grow all this way at once. It'd be very difficult to hire all these officers, hire all these personnel. So, we gotta, we gotta build it up over time. We'd love to have the positions all at once, but we just, we need to build it up over time. So, right now, just as an example, that seems like a lot of positions. But it takes five, at least five officers or five communication specialists to staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, really, by adding five people, we're only adding one officer to each shift. So, we're not increasing our standards very high. Or, right now, we're running a minimum of eight officers on day shift, minimum of 10 officers on swings, minimum of eight officers on graveyards. We have eight officers in field training right now. They just started, or just finished the academy, and we're hiring five more in two weeks. We also have, it takes 18 months to recruit, select, and train our officers to get them to the street to where they're working on their own. So, we're always, thankfully, we have over hires that we can do. But we're always kind of playing catch-up because it takes so long to get them selected, trained, through field training, and out on their own. And that works for both police, fire, and communications. Right now, we are consistently understaffed on every shift. We're filling staffing requirements with overtime. We're filling staffing requirements with holdovers. But I, and then we also have to meet the needs of special events and different situations, the ongoing major events like a crash or, you know, just some sort of major event. Those are all filled with overtime. But that does result in fatigue to our officers. We're getting some burnout with our officers because they just need some time off. And what we see is it doesn't, we work a 4:10 schedule. So, they're on four days, off three days. So, they're not getting to get that three days off in a row. And then you throw in court sometimes if you're a junior officer, night shift and transitioning. So, we're just seeing a lot of fatigue and some burnout, and it's getting harder and harder to fill those shifts. Yes, sir.
Jeff, and real quickly, I know you were going to, I think you were going to cover this later. But this is an issue of safety for us. And when we can't put the minimum number of people on the street, what we end up doing is responding to a lot of two-person calls, two police officer calls with one police officer. And we've seen circumstances over time where police officers were either near misses or in fights, or in some cases, life and death kinds of Donny Brooks, where the other officer couldn't get there fast enough and/or got there later. And so, this minimum staffing has not only a lot to do with workload, but it has a lot to do with the safety of police officers. I just want to make that point really clear.
So, our dispatch center takes about 173,000 calls for service a year. Our officers handle about 86,000 calls for service on average, about 8.2 a day, depending, then throw in traffic tickets and other things like that. throw in traffic tickets and other things like that. So, we're very busy, but our dispatch center is extremely busy. They are always shuffling phone calls and personnel and listening. They are the ultimate multitaskers. As you can see in that window right there, they got seven screens in front of them. So, they're, they're the ultimate multitaskers. This is some data from our communication center. The big blue circle is the police responses. The red circle is the fire responses. The yellow are the number of EMDs that they do. When somebody calls in, they do emergency medical dispatch. So, they talk to the person on the phone and walk them through how to do CPR. And they did 400 of those last year. When they're doing that, they can't take 911 calls, or they have to find somebody to transit. So, things get dropped if they don't have adequate staffing. And this slide is a little small, but the Association of Public Safety Communication Officials recommends that for a communication center based on our call volume, that we have 26 communication specialists. We're asking for six communication specialists. Right now, we are currently authorized 20 positions. We only have 13 trained dispatchers right now, and those 13 are training four dispatchers right now. We have one coming on quickly. So, but right now, we have 16 positions. Four of those are in training, and we have the others training everybody. So, they're extremely busy in our communication center. Priority one calls, this is the slide Chief Butler was referring to. Priority one calls are the emergency calls for service, the high-risk calls for service, the accidents, any call that requires at least two officers. And last year, in 2015, we had 11,968 priority one calls. In 2016, we had 14,886 priority one calls. Again, those are the two-officer calls. To handle all those calls, it took 37,000 officer responses. So, it took a three-to-one. And I've got a slide coming up to explain how that happens. But that happens from shifting resources. So, three officers will go to a call, and then one will break from that and go to another priority one call. And then one, so we're always shifting resources and moving people around to keep up with those priorities, to make sure our officers have cover. And that's resulting in a delay of about 2.8 minutes that our officers are on scene by themselves on average for priority one calls, which is not safe. It goes towards the safety of our officers. So, it's not safe for our officers. This is a slide, this is just a screenshot of all the priority one calls for a period, and I broke them out into different colors to explain why, why there's a larger number of officer responses. As you can see in the yellow, that's a traffic accident. And that, what is that, about 15 or 12 officers that responded to that? So, then we have domestics in there, suicidals. So, it's, we're always constant, constantly shuffling. So, there were 21, 20 priority one calls over five hours. So, we're always shifting. That's just a five-hour period right there. Detectives, that was one of our big requests, is for some additional detectives. And clearly, we have a very extensive caseload, and I'll show you some stats here in a moment. This is our detective staffing right now. We have about 14 detectives that work on call. We have a couple of forensics detectives. We have a CSO, but they don't respond. But primarily, we have 14 detectives that do all our on-call work. This is a slide. You can see, we had a little dip for a while, and then we've just been increasing every year. And these are the big cases that we do on a regular basis. Sex assaults, domestic violence, child abuse, and death investigations. And as you can see, they've, they've all kind of increased, especially around domestic violence. We had a little dip in sex assaults, but I've got a slide coming up on that. I don't want to scare people about our sex assaults, but this is a slide of five months of sex assaults. And these are not the sex assaults where you have somebody jumping out of a bush and grabbing somebody and sexually. These are the family kind of sex assaults, the neighbor kind of sex assaults. The, so these are all known to the victim usually. And as, this is over five months, we had 98 reported sex assaults. These cases are incredibly intensive. I'm sure you saw some of the news reports just recently. We had an incident at a church that was investigated. We, so those are the kind of sex assaults we're talking about. Often, these type of sex assaults build on somebody. So, we get a disclosure through the school. The kid says, you know, so-and-so did this to me. We start investigating. Oftentimes, we'll find other victims associated that. If it's a relative or a family relation, oftentimes, we uncover long periods of abuse in that family. And so, we see that go on for years. And so, those cases can grow exponentially. Financial crimes, there's been some changes. This is a very busy slide, but there's been some changes in the law against wrongs against adult. And as a result, our officers are required to investigate these crimes. And I'm just showing you kind of the increase. These were things that changed in the law, and now we have to investigate. And there are the crime, you know, theft from the elderly, abuse of the elderly, those type of cases that we need to investigate. We need to be thorough on. In addition to the investigations, they go to trial. The DA's office last year took approximately 50 cases to trial. A lot of those cases are going to be Longmont cases. One of our detectives has had four trials this year for sex assaults. She's had four different cases. And those cases are at a minimum a week-long jury trial, plus the preparation and all that. So, she, she is not investigating cases when she's in trial. But they're going up, and they're complex, and they take away from our officers' ability to do their other parts of their investigation. We also are involved in shoot team investigations. We average about three a year. We support countywide shoot team. So, countywide, we have about three investigations. So, those are additional things that pull from our resources, major traffic accidents, and I just admin loss, court time, et cetera. All those go towards dragging down our resources. And I just left this slide in here. This was a case, it was a horrendous case. This, Mr. West here drove to Connecticut, you may remember this, kidnapped a girl that was 14, brought her back to Longmont. We had to investigate. We found the girl. We rescued the girl from this individual. He eventually was sentenced to 70 years in prison, but the detective in that case had 66,000 files to review that this, he was surfing the internet all the time looking for little girls. And so, she had to go through all that stuff. And that was an incredible amount of work. Yes.
And real quick, two areas that Jeff isn't going to cover are the areas of traffic and computer forensics. And I know all of you have been with, coffee with council, and almost always what comes up is, we can't get any enforcement on our street, or we need enforcement on our street. There's 340 miles of roads, and I don't think there's an inch that doesn't require some kind, or people don't think that requires some kind of enforcement. Also, in our request are more resources to handle traffic issues, including enforcement in our community. The other area is computer forensics. We have two people assigned to look at various devices that are involved in crimes. There's hardly a crime now that that happens where there's not some kind of digital device involved. And so, our, we are responsible for collecting that kind of evidence. The district attorney requires it, the public defenders or defenders require it, the juries require it, and technology allows us to do it. And so, we can barely keep up with that reactive aspect of it. But the proactive aspect of it, if you were to talk to our computer forensics folks, will tell you that there's a considerable amount of pedophilia that happens over the, over the internet that we cannot address. And, and so, a lot of those things are happening, a lot of possession of child porn. I mean, they're just, unfortunately, we can't get to those. We're not asking for those positions, by the way. We're going to try to figure out how we can get more proactive, but those are two areas that Jeff is not addressing in this. Just wanted to bring that up, traffic and computer forensics.
And just as you know, at all our major intersections, 17th and Main, Highway 66 and Main, every intersection along Ken Pratt, those are our highest volume of wrecks. And it's because that's the highest volume of traffic. I mean, we, all those intersections have about 50,000 cars going through them an hour, a day. Our Longmont fire needs, this is their immediate and projected staffing needs. Their most immediate need right now is a fire prevention specialist to work in codes and planning section of fire services. Right now, we have one person staffing that unit, Fire Marshal Michelle Goldman. We also have an assistant fire marshal and a senior fire inspector. There are 66 projects in our community under construction, 46 currently in development and a review committee, over 2,300 construction inspections that need to be done, 30 school inspections and fire drills, and over 3,800 annual fire inspections plus follow-up. And the three of them, plus all the fire crews, are doing those inspections on a regular basis. Pre-incident planning and data management, fire safety and outreach are also part of their responsibilities, volunteer coordination, and then they just, the ongoing responsibility for the lifespan of the building. So, you know, they're, they're looking at a lot of things. Currently, there's about six to eight weeks for them to review all the plans. And then, you know, big buildings, big projects create more time, more work, and more input from our fire services. Codes and planning scored poorly in the ISO evaluation. As you know, we recently went from ISO 4 to an ISO 2 rating in our city, which is incredible. And one of the things that maybe kept us from going to ISO 1, which is a really good score, were some of the, the scores associated with our codes and planning. As, as you can see, we have the different percentages up there. So, there were things that we could have done better in our codes and planning. By comparison in codes and planning, Longmont is in the orange, and then other communities around us, and Longmont's the one, is that your left? Your left. And then, all the other cities around us are their codes and fire prevention employees. For suppression in 2020, we are asking for additional firefighters. This is a life, safety, workload capacity. As a result, you know, we need to, for commercial fires, for multifamily residential structures, we need about 28 personnel. Right now, we can only deliver 23. The NFPA standards and regional standard is suggesting that we have 28 personnel to meet those needs. Right now, we can deliver 23 personnel, but that leaves us zero personnel to handle any other issues that may develop in the city. So, they're requesting an increase in fire paramedics and firefighters. We also have some ways of mitigating that, and we're doing that right now with our Alpha Car. But we could add two firefighters in a SUV. They could respond to ASR resources to different events, and then respond into the big fires also to support them on the bigger fires. So, there is a way to reduce that, but it takes a different kind of vehicle, but we still need the firefighters to support those vehicles. OEM, one of the requests, OEM is to continue to fund our recovery manager. This is a 2020 request. This is Peter. Currently, he's funded through FEMA and the state recovery reimbursement system, but that revenue source is going to dramatically decrease in 2019, 2020. So, if we want to continue to extend his ability to provide these services, which we believe will carry us through 220 or 2025 to meet all the needs as a result of the flood recovery, we're going to need to fund that position. And it's imperative that we maintain this position because he has a lot of institutional knowledge, a lot of expertise in OEM and funding and finance and ongoing project. And so, he, he, we need to keep that position. The recovery manager will be primarily responsible for maintaining recovery, maintaining the recovery pan, plan, I'm sorry, and managing the recovery efforts and disasters, and will assist OEM in community resiliency efforts. So, as a last request, here's the slide again with our staffing positions. I can leave that up here. This is, I have one last slide, but this is some of the other positions that we're asking for. So, if you have questions, we can ask, answer some of those questions.
Well, not a question, but just a comment. It looks like you've done your homework really well and laid out a pretty good story for public safety in this town. So, I commend you for that.
And we had a lot of great support from everybody. This was a team effort. Thank you.
Well, you know, I appreciate how well the officers are trained in lots of different situations because there's been some real, you know, suicide by officer attempts where it could have ended quite badly, and fortunately, you know, it ended well. And I think it's, goes to say how well, how important it is to train people, not just hire them and put them out on the street, but to actually give them the training they need to handle situations like that. So, thank you.
And we respond to approximately 700 suicidal parties a year, police and fire.
Impressive. Any questions from council?
Mayor, one thing I did want to say is, you know, when the list came out, it was more extensive, and they went through internal conversations, and they reduced it down, again, focusing really on the needs and taking that future look. And then, Mike and I had another look at it. And so, what we were really trying to do is to say, here's what we need, and as we look to the future. And that's why the three FTE in the future was built in. I will tell you, as things change, one of the conversations that Mike and I had is, even in this structure, you know, one of the things that's becoming more and more, you see more calls related to this is cybercrimes. We don't know what the next cybercrime situation's going to be like. And so, we're always going to have to be evaluating where the world's going and what the position's really, what we really need. But I wanted to say that this is, this is a pared-down request after lots of conversations.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm back. That's actually the numbers guy, right? But I'm going to get my slides back, but I want to, I'm going to take us back now to, just step back to the discussion about the Public Improvement Fund first. And I think I didn't connect all the dots here initially, but, so, as we mentioned before, it was already proposed in the, it is already proposed in CIP that we have a bond issue in 2019. So, that would be our solution to, for the Public Improvement Fund issues, at least for the 10 or 11 projects that we have identified there. With the general fund, I mentioned the increase in sales tax and property tax because I didn't really connect the dots and point out that we're not proposing to do anything else but try to use the new increased revenue in the general fund in 2017, 18 to address those needs that I identified there. So, then now, moving back then to the public safety tax. So, based on the information that public safety has provided, the 43 FTE and how they had them phased over, over three years, what it does, because they're not adding all three, all 43 in year one, it gives us an opportunity in the first two years to be able to have a certain amount of dollars, a significant amount of dollars that we be able to dedicate towards one-time expenses, over $4 million in those first two years, because we're going to need that level of revenue by year three to be able to support all 43 FTE, once those are all in place in the third year. So, what we did here is we scoped this to try to address all of the, each of the 43 FTE as they come on, all the associated ongoing costs and one-time costs that go with those FTE, because those are heavy dollar amounts in the public safety department because of all the training and equipment that goes along with those positions. So, those are also a part that we've broken out in the council communication. And then, we also have some, we took the ongoing cost that were unfunded in 2017's request, and we have built those in. I've labeled those as other ongoing costs. We're actually in. I've labeled those as other ongoing costs. We're actually going to have to take care of some of those requests in the 2018 general fund budget, because regardless of whether we can have a public safety tax increase passed or not, we have a commitment there in the hazmat area that we're going to need to fund. So, I've not put that in the public safety tax. So, that's why there's a little bit of a reduction in the numbers for the other ongoing costs. And then, what we've done is taken all, because we have four million dollars available to us in the first two years for all one-time expenses, it will address much of what was identified for the public safety fund in 2017, including replacement of their report writing system, which is a pretty significant expense. And then also probably give us a certain amount of dollars, the one-time dollars, that probably could go towards beginning to deal with housing these new positions. So, in making the projections for the sales tax and what it might take, we basically using conservative projections of three percent growth per year. We targeted based on what we would need in year four, when all of those costs are in place on an ongoing basis for the forty-three FTE, all the other ongoing costs. And we wanted to remain, or leave us with another $700,000 of, in a sense, ongoing money that we would use for one-time expenses each year. Very little dollars are available to the public safety fund currently for one-time expenses. We really like allocate about $100,000 a year currently. So, we trying now to increase that because their needs are pretty significant from year to year. We could get this up another $700,000 added to that through the tax. And in two or three years, the fire station number one lease pays off, which would free up another $350,000 that would also be available for one-time expenses. So, we'd be able to address some of the needs that we really can't address from year to year in public safety. So, what I did is take the projection for two thousand, oh, the fourth year, which seemed, assumed would be 2021, and backed into that based on the FTE costs from year to year and how they grow. And so, that's how we ended up with so much of the one-time dollars available in the first two years. Very little of it available in year three, but once again, as we get to year four, we get to $700,000 a year. So, housing public safety is going to be a challenge, these public safety staff. We do not have a full answer here. We have to be straight with you right now. There is a unfunded CIP project that has been in the CIP for fifteen years or more to expand the Safety and Justice Center. It was a cost of $20.2 million. We really need to update that and assess their current space needs, and it may require a future bond issue to fund something like that. We do not have a source of funding currently identified. In other words, I've not built anything like that into this sales tax estimate. If you wanted us to do that, we could do that. But I think it's something that, that really is, if it's going to be done, that is truly a one-time expense, and you would probably sunset a tax like that versus the rest of this is really something that, like the prior public safety tax can't be sunsetted, because these are all ongoing type expenses otherwise. Our current city sales tax rate is 3.275%. Point three-two-five of that is the public safety tax. To generate almost 5.2 million for 2018, which is what I've sized it at for that first year, that would take an increase of approximately point two-four-five percent. That's today. When we make our projections for 2018, in another month or more, we'll refine that if we're still looking at this as a possibility. So, that would raise the public safety tax rate to point five-seven percent, and would take the overall city sales tax rate to 3.52%. So, and I'm putting that in here because Mike pointed out that when we did the last public safety tax, we didn't, we weren't able to get the number of FTE that were originally projected. I'm not guarantee you get the forty-three FTE either. Previous results are not a guarantee of future performance, and if there's an economic downturn, we will be in the same situation again. So, this is all based on today's sales tax dollars and three percent or so increases per year. So, that can change. And, you know, I, I'm going to ask Jeff not to come up here and say, we didn't get the FTE you guys said you were going to get, so. So, back to the sales tax rate. I gave you information in your packet that includes a schedule, or a table of all the front-range cities, basically from the metro, metro area northward, and what their current sales tax rate is, or at least it was at the beginning of this year. I don't think there's changes in that since then. In April elections, I haven't worked those into that. And we're on the lower, sort of the three-quarter end of the scale of that list currently. So, and 3.52 doesn't take us to the top or even near the top, but just wanted to give you that information. We're not asking for direction tonight, by the way. I mean, if you want to give us direction, you can give us direction. Timing-wise, we would need to do a ballot question introduced to the council in an ordinance by August eighth. And so, as a result of what we're talking about here tonight, there would be two issues to potentially consider. And that would include the vote for a bond for the projects in the Public Improvement Fund. And based on the timing I've laid out there, we would have one of two opportunities to do that in either 2017, November of seventeen, or November of 2018, just to keep that on that timetable. And then, again, the other, the other issue would be this public safety sales tax. So, and then finally, I do, I do point out within the communication, you know, are, there's going to be other needs, you know. This was based mostly on what we identified last September and what they have built on their public safety needs looking forward. But, you know, I told you we got budget requests earlier this month, and I'm sure I'll be coming to you in September with some other unfunded requests. And I can tell you off the top of my head right now that we've already been asked to add more things to that five-year CIP that is already maxed out, and is going to be very tough to even fit in what we had in it this year because of the change to the Civic Center project. But some of those needs are funding for the first and main TOD project, the infrastructure of the House Public Safety that I just referred to, possible downtown parking structure was talked about during the strategic plan for downtown, and the unfunded project that's been in there for the pool and ice facility that we probably will hear about soon as well. So, I'm not telling you that we're solving all the city's needs here, but we're trying to identify some solutions to take care of a good deal of them, we hope. So, with that, I think that's all of my presentation. I'll try to answer any other questions you have. And if there is any information that you need for us to bring back to you, please let us know. Tried to give you as much information as possible, but I'm sure there are other questions that we can bring back more detailed information on.
Well, I think that was a very good presentation. I'm just looking at this list of cities and what cities pay sales tax. The surprising thing to me, you know, and I think we do a really good job with our sales tax, and I think we are, I think it's the finest city in Colorado. But I'm just shocked to see that Fort Collins is down there at 2.25%. I mean, how could they possibly?
So, Fort Collins, excuse me, Mayor, but, so, there's a couple of those, when there's a notes in the column on the right-hand side, you'll find that some of those cities are on the list twice.
Oh, okay.
And the reason being that they are, have a differing rate for food, for home consumption versus everything else.
Yeah, okay.
And so, that's their rate down below there for their home consumption of food.
Got it. Thank you. Now, then, that clarifies that. That was confusing to me. Thank you. Any other questions from council? You know, I kind of agree with you that we probably shouldn't take any direction since Councilmember Bagley's not here, but I think that presentation was excellent. And I personally think we need support, public safety in this community, and I hope we have an opportunity to do that. But I hope that happens when we have a full contingent of seven council members.
Thank you, council.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. Real quick, guys. Perhaps, you know, with Councilmember Bagley not attending us tonight, perhaps at a future study session, we can get at least some language about what a ballot measure on both would look like, just as, you know, perhaps, the presentation, as Mayor Coombs says, was fantastic. But perhaps when we're full body, we can have a little bit more of a discussion about should, when should we go and how should we go as far as in seven, this year or next year. Just a thought.
We'll look at a study session in July.
Mayor Coombs, your last item is the Windy Gap Fermi Project Update and Council Direction on Financing Plan Deal. Dale Radamaker will start this off.
Mayor Coombs and Members of Council, Dale Radamaker, General Manager of Public Works and Natural Resources. And I think we're trying to pull up the slideshow on Windy Gap. Tonight, we're going to essentially go through three items. First thing we're going to do is, I'm going to have Ken Houston give you a brief update on the status of the project and why we're back talking to you about it tonight. We're going to follow that with a, a review of the financing plan. As you'll recall, we last were talking with you about the financing back in December, and that's when we, you directed us to hold on that project pending the issuance of the 404 permit. And then, finally, we'd like to get direction from you on moving forward with regards to the financing of the project. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to Ken.
Thank you, Dale. Members of council, Ken Houston, Water Resources Manager. I just wanted to briefly update you tonight on the status of the project. So, when we get into the conversation about funding, you'll have that, that background. We're currently in what we call the fifth phase of the project. And in this phase, it's primarily was finishing up permitting and then getting into design and initiating a number of the necessary items to move forward to actual construction of the project, but it does not include construction of the project. As council may recall, Longmont is participating in this fifth phase at the 10,000 acre foot level, and we've got approximately about $5 million that we've spent so far in the project. In this fifth phase, there were two main, or, excuse me, three main items that have been completed. Obviously, we're here tonight because the 404 permit was issued, which was great news. That was really the last federal permit that was necessary to get the project moving forward. In addition, there was the final signature of what we call the Windy Gap IGA or the Colorado River Cooperative Agreement. That's an agreement between both the West Slope and the East Slope, West Slope participant, or West Slope entities who have been working with the project participants to move the project forward. That shows a lot of cooperation, a lot of the work that's gone, gone on in the West Slope. And finally, completion of what's called the Sushon outage protocol to take care of some issues on the West Slope with water rights. But there are, there are still a few additional items that need to be done. The first, probably the most significant item, is completion of a water rights filing decree. The parent Windy Gap project has a decree. That decree had originally contemplated a large storage reservoir on the West Slope as part of this process. The West Slope reservoir had greater environmental impacts, so as part of the federal permitting, you have to choose a project that has the least environmental impacts, which is what was chosen. The Chimney Hollow project, just west of Carter Lake. So, that decree has to be amended to include this storage facility explicitly and allow, and make sure that that's, that's clear in the final decree. Final design is, is, needs to also be completed. Currently, the, what we'll all call an intermediate designer, about a 60% design, is expected to be done, completed this summer. That design effort's going very well. They've actually selected a preferred embankment, which is essentially a hydraulic asphalt core rock-filled dam, which will be fairly unique in this area. And that, so that, that designs close to the, to the intermediate phase, and then hopefully quickly after that, it'll go to final design. It's expected the final design will be done next spring, early summer. Since the 404 permit was issued, that triggered a lot, a number of the mitigation efforts that need to, need to occur. And so, over the next two to three months, there are a number of mitigation efforts that will be initiated and ongoing. One of those, one of the efforts is what's called the connectivity channel around the Windy Gap reservoir on the Colorado River. That, we, just recently, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, Soil Conservation Service, issued a very large grant for, to help in the construction. That's about a $10 million project, which is really independent of the Fermi project, but is necessary to make better connectivity and better fisheries, aquatic environment on the West Slope. That, that really fit a funding need for that project. So, that's really the only point now is to get a decree. We, you actually are going to have to get a water rate decree to put water in that connectivity channel. So, that's being negotiated right now. And finally, there are a few small properties. The bulk of the reservoir site's been acquired, but there are a couple small properties that touch the reservoir site that have to be acquired, and those are currently under negotiation with the property. So, the project's going along quite well, and currently, there's nothing that, of any concern from the design or engineering or permitting standpoint. So, I'll turn it over to Becky and let her bring, update you on the financing options. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. I'm Becky Doyle, Public Works and Natural Resources Rate Analyst, and I'm here to update you on the financing plan. So, to review, we are participating in the project at a level of 10,000 acre feet. And at the current cost estimate of $4,700 per acre foot, we're looking at a total project cost of $47 million. Some of that is in sunk costs that we've already spent over the years in design, but, so we're looking at about a $42 million expenditure in 2018 as we go to construction. The previous direction that we had from council was that we were going to sell $6 million in bonds, hopefully this year, in order to take advantage of the market while it's in a good position, and that the remaining amount of money that we need to raise will be raised by increasing water rates in 2017 and 18. So, there are a few changed conditions since, since we last talked about this in December. We raised some additional revenue in cash and lieu and development fees. So, that's good news, because it reduces the amount of money that we need to raise from increased rates from about $10 million to about $6 million. So, we're needing a little less money out of this rate increase. However, we've also missed, you know, if we adopt the rates as soon as possible, we're still only going to get them in place by July, maybe August, water bills. And so, we will have possibly missed the irrigation peak. Our highest water use is usually in July, depending on weather patterns and those sort of things. So, we will have missed a lot of water use that we could have collected at a higher rate, and we estimate that, that... rate, and we estimate that foregone revenue to be about $1 million. Additionally, because the permit is now firm, we do expect that we will be obliged to write our $42 million check in 2018 instead of 2019. So altogether, what this means is that instead of raising an additional $10 million over a three-year period, we need to raise $6 million in a one-and-a-half-year period. So.
So I have a question. What would happen if we did decide to give you a different direction, to go out and to vote for the people and do a full bond for the project? Now, let's say, you know, case one, it's approved, they still have to go out and get the bonds, and so that's easy to understand, but what if the bonds were not approved, then we're, what would you, well, to fill the gap, would you borrow the money from like the street fund to make the payments and then pay it back when you got the bonds? How do you close that timing gap that, you know, you're behind the eight ball if you go out for bonds? Which, you know, I kind of agree with some of the comments, you know, that why should the elder generation be totally funding something we're building for, you know, the future generation 15 years from now? I mean, that argument kind of rings with me, so anyway, that's.
So Mayor and Council, you might recall, we did look at a fully bonded scenario way back when, earlier last year, and as I recall, that does take off some of the initial peaks, if you will. It spreads it out over more years, but what it does result in, because you're paying back the interest on that additional money, is that over the longer term, your water rates are probably going to be higher, because you're having to pay back all the interest. And so you might recall that discussion that we had on debt servicing versus paying cash. And so it would be correct, in the sense that it would stretch out the payment over a longer period of time, thereby bringing in future rate payers as opposed to your current rate payers as well.
Right.
Mayor Coombs, I would also add, we do have a split right now between several different funding sources. So I mentioned cash in lieu, so that's money that we get in lieu of water rights as people come into the city, so that's something that, you know, developers or newly annexed property would pay, and also development fees. So cash in lieu can only be used for the purchase of water rights, and we also have a small fund, about $400,000, that's only usable for raw water storage, so that's clearly being used here. So those two funds that have very limited uses are our first dollars. And then after that point, we are endeavoring to have a relatively equal split between rates and TAP fees, like, so system development fees for new connections coming in.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
We're endeavoring to make that relatively equal.
Uh huh.
So, and this is just a graph about the delay in the rate increase and cumulative revenue collected.
Excuse me, I guess, sorry, Councilmember Christensen, did you want to ask that question?
And what would happen if we reconsidered going back to, as a compromise, 8,000 acre feet?
Councilmember Christensen, is your question about what the rate would be or what the process?
Rate, yes.
Well, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, we haven't recently studied the 8,000 acre foot scenario, but at a high level, we know that because of the additional revenues in those other funding sources, that we would still have to have a rate increase above the already codified 9%. High level, we believe that it could be probably, what we would have to do is just move the 9% rate increase that's currently codified for 2019 into 2018, because of that making the payment earlier problem. But we could potentially get to an 8,000 acre foot scenario without a lot of rate increase above the expected increases for the 6,000 acre foot scenario from many moons ago.
And Mayor and Council, as Becky said, your direction to us has been 10,000 acre feet, and that's what we have been analyzing for you. I believe she is correct, though. You know, two significant changes have occurred. We've gotten additional cash in lieu, and we've got additional TAPS. You know, the growth in the city has been higher than what our projections are, which are typically fairly conservative. And you currently have codified rates increases of about 9% for '17, '18, and '19. Those are already on the books, and so short answer is, we would have to study that further, but it is potential that we could leave those rate increases, simply moving the 18, or the 19 rate increase up into '18, which is a bump in the rate, but you would forego the 19 rate increase at that point, if that makes sense to folks. And again, we'd need to actually study that.
Right, yes, okay. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. We had already programmed three years of 9% increases, correct? That, if I remember correctly, was for water infrastructure maintenance and CIP improvements, not for Windy Gap.
Right, yes, that's correct.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, it included the Windy Gap project, Windy Gap Filling Project, at a level of 6,000 acre feet.
Okay.
That was part of the capital plan that was presented at the time.
Okay. And then you made another comment about moving the dollars into 2018 instead of 2019. Why would we do that?
That is going to be the requirement by Northern Water. We'd been hedging that, you know, that their schedule might slip a little bit, but now that they have the permit, it seems that commencement of construction will occur in the fall of 2018, and we will be required to provide our funds at that time.
Yeah, and Mayor and Councilmember Moore, if I could add just a little bit. It comes down to the fact, and partially by state law, to be able to issue a contract for the construction of the Windy Gap Filling Project, a public entity can't issue a contract unless the funds are in place, whether that be a bond or cash in the bank, whatnot. And so for the municipal sub-district, they can't issue a contract. Nor would we really want them to, because not only does Longmont participate, but there are many other participants, and we wouldn't want to put at risk the significant amount of money that we would put in that project if other participants hadn't also put in money, because you can't build part of a reservoir. And so it really comes down to you have to have all the money upfront. Originally, it was expected that it would be in 2019, when the actual trigger, the actual contract that would be issued to a contractor to build the project. With the recent issuance of that 404 and other things that are going on on the project, the municipal sub-district is currently planning or currently scheduling a construction contract award for late 2018. Now, there's a lot of caveats on that, you know. One is the water right decree has to be completed first, probably the most significant time, but there are other things such as design and successful bid and that kind of thing. So it's really, it's a scheduling.
Just another quick thing, Council, is it's actually good news for the project to be moving faster than what we thought. Projects normally don't get cheaper the longer they take, and so the fact that the district is moving at a good clip right now is actually a good thing from a financial perspective. What it means to us, though, and what we would recommend, is that we should do the prudent planning now, so that Longmont is not the entity that can't come to the table and pay the bill and to get the project underway. And I think that's what we're trying to explain with the financing that we're discussing tonight.
Right, but for a month, I just heard that they wouldn't start construction until 2019 anyway, because they need the water decree, need final design next spring. They're just, I don't think the timeline, in my mind, is not solid.
It's the best information we have from the district, and it's the district's project, and their information to us is to be ready to issue a contract for construction in 2018. That's what we are reporting to you, and I think that's our responsibility as a participant, to be prepared, to be on board with that.
I hear what you're saying, but the 404 was anticipated to be a year ago also. So are we going to be collecting rates that are not going to be used for the purpose that they were intended for a year? I guess that's the question that I would put forth.
And clearly, Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Moore, as Ken mentioned, there are many steps that need to happen on the project, but I think we're also saying that we don't anticipate any significant delays in those. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, this isn't a project that we're managing, that the Longmont staff are managing for you, where you can hold us to say we need to be ready to go at a certain time. I believe that as a partner in a project, just like Loveland and Greeley and everybody else that's in the project, I would hope, and I believe all the entities need to be prepared, to finance their participation on the schedule that the district is sending to us. Now, if that could change in the future, I mean, obviously, we would report that back to you, and whether that would or wouldn't have an impact, for instance, on a rate increase that might be happening in 2018, we can talk about that, but there's not a lot of time between now and, you know, starting the rate increases in '17 and then the additional rate increase in January of '18. So there's not a whole lot of time for that schedule to either change one way or another.
You didn't expect it would be easy, would you?
No, exactly.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Dale, what would happen if we changed our participation level at this point? If we just.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Peck, again, if the will of the council is to direct the staff to report back to you on what the rate issues and impacts would be at a different participation level, when we get to the end of this presentation, that was one of the, we are going to seek direction from you on how to move forward, and certainly be looking for that. I believe we could come back to you, let's see, we don't have a meeting next week, we could probably report back, at least initially, later this month or in July, on whatever direction you want to give us.
You know, I think it's important to, you know, get to the real numbers, because, you know, percentage increases kind of scare people, and they say 17%, but, you know, I look at my current bill, you know, 258 for, because we use 5,000 gallons of water, and we're low water, and I go, wow, it's going to go up to 345, you know, it's not something I'm going to lose a lot of sleep over, but that's, so, you know, it's a cup of coffee. In fact, it's not even a cup of coffee. So, anyway.
Right.
All right, so continue with the rest of the presentation, please.
Mayor Coombs, to your point, these are the revised proposed rate increases. The top line shows what we had talked about for the ordinance in November, December, where we were going to adopt 17, an average of 17% rate increase in 2017 and also 2018, and then no rate increase in 2019. Those rate increases would have replaced the 9% increases that are currently in the municipal code. Because of the changed conditions, the rate increases that are now required are an average increase of 23% for the remainder of 2017, and then on top of that, 17% of rate increase in 2018, followed, again, by no rate increase in 2019. And then we've been talking about this as a long-term rate issue, you know, looking at rates going out quite a ways. Obviously, these are very vague ideas of what future rate increases could be, but over the long term, these rate increases are fairly similar. What that means for water bills, this year looks like a little less than $2 additional, and also about $1.50 additional in 2018. By the end of that 10-year planning period, we're roughly equal, and folks at this average level of 9,000 gallons of use per month have spent about $150 extra. Questions on this? Per year? No, that's over the total period.
Okay, so that's, yeah, cost per year, okay. So I know that when we first looked at this thing, one of the things we looked at too was the fact that people are using less and less water as we go into the future, and as you raise rates, that could actually bend that curve a little bit more, potentially. We don't know people's, but if people, you know, if that does happen, then, you know, perhaps the, you know, when we look at all the variabilities, the reason why I personally like the 10,000 is because it covered almost, not the, you know, the only thing it covered the worst, worst case was 12,000, but the 10,000 was, it's kind of like, you know, you build a bridge for the, you know, to survive the 10-year flood or the 100-year flood, it costs a lot more to cover that 100-year flood, and it's the same kind of problem we're looking at here. You know, so what's the right number? Nobody knows. I mean, nobody knows about climate change, or can we have three or four really drought years in a row? Are people going to change their habits and use more zero scape and use less? Or are we going to have to impose, you know, like water restrictions or water days or other things? I mean, there's many ways to skin the cat. And, you know, I guess, I'll see the rest of the presentation, but I kind of wish Councilmember Bagley was here tonight, too, because I think we almost need a full contingency of people to decide on whether or not, you know, we want to consider, I'm not there yet on changing from the 10,000. I thought it was the right number, or I still think it's the right number, but I'd be willing to rethink it if things change, like if we anticipate, you know, water usages to go down at a steeper rate than what we originally had for that projection. I don't know, there's just so many different variables that that decision was made on. It's not just, you know, you don't build a system, you don't build a power system for the average, you build it for the peak worst hot day of the summer, and that's kind of what we're trying to do here.
And Mayor Coombs, you're bringing up a lot of, I think, a lot of the issues that we did brief you on, again, probably earlier last year, with regards to the studies that we've completed. And what I would say, and just to remind the council, is that both the raw water master plan and the integrated treated water master plan looked at the build-out demands of the city and assumed no reduction in water demand on a per capita basis, even though the trend has been a reducing amount for a lot of reasons, cost being one of them. It also had a variability allowance, if you will, for things like impacts on climate change, impacts on different things that can impact the city's water supply. I think we also looked at the, again, at the build-out situation of a 100-year drought. And so we're not looking for a water supply that would meet just the average demand of the city, but rather the demand of the city at build-out with a 1 in 100-year drought, which is one that, the duration is about seven years in length, and is one that's actually probably more stringent than most of our neighboring cities. And so, again, that's sort of been Longmont's legacy, of planning for a, what I call, robust water supply, that gets us through that kind of a scenario. But you were hitting on a lot of the topics that I think we did brief on quite a while ago, but just to remind you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You know what I think is always left out of this conversation is that staff was preparing for drought with the enlargement of, the expansion of the Union Reservoir. for drought with the enlargement of, the expansion of the Union Reservoir, and for... And I thought that was why, when we were talking about Chimney Hollow years ago, that 6,000 acre feet, along with the expansion of the reservoir, was what was recommended by staff. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but are we not going to, after we put all the engineering and expertise and study and survey into Union, are we not going to expand that?
At some point here, I'm going to let Ken jump in, but, because he's more of an expert than I am, but Mayor Combs and Councilmember Peck, Longmont is very fortunate, because we have a number of water supply alternatives that we can use going forward. One of them is the Windy Gap Fermi Project, which staff has recommended that we participate in and be part of, because it's high-quality water, it's one of the cheaper solutions, and so on. So, we've always recommended that that would be a good project.
Correct.
We've also said, and I think I repeated it again a couple of weeks ago, that it's important that we hold on to the expansion decree for Union Reservoir, for a lot of reasons. Again, you know, if I could guarantee what the city's water supply, both in yield and demand, would look like 50 and 100 years from now, I'd be a genius. I think it's wise to hold on to those alternatives, and so, the expansion of Union, if we go forward with Windy Gap, is going to be delayed. In other words, we would not turn around and come back to you and say, oh, time to enlarge Union anytime soon, but instead, you would hold that as a, as sort of a reserve alternative, similar to the Union Pump Back Project, similar to the potential expansion of Ralph Price Reservoir. Again, we have a number of those options that are both viable and important, that the city maintain our diligence on, irrespective of how much we participate in the Windy Gap Project. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
So isn't pumping back water a lot more expensive than, I mean, isn't that a much more expensive water solution? Let's say we went, say with the 6,000 hypothetically, and we found it out, geez, that wasn't enough we really need in 4,000, now we need to expand Union Reservoir and pump back, isn't that a lot more expensive solution, in using lower quality water than to actually have...
And then Mayor, you're correct, and of course, Windy Gap is 100% pumped. Everything is pumped from the Windy Gap Reservoir up into Granby, and so, the alternatives that we're looking at, probably other than the expansion of Ralph Price, which has a whole host of issues with it, to try to enlarge an on-stream reservoir, involve pumping at one time or another of the water to get it to us. And so, that's probably sort of an equalizer between a lot of the alternatives.
So then, Dale, why did staff recommend only 6,000 acre feet of water in Windy Gap? For build-out of Longmont?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Peck, that was based upon the studies that we'd completed, both the raw water master plan and the integrated treated water plan, that we looked at the yield that we would receive from a participation level of 6,000 acre feet, and lined that up with the deficit that we would have between now and build-out. And that, so that was based on the studies that I talked about a few minutes ago, and, you know, Ken can probably talk about that more, because again, he was the staff member that was heading up that effort. I don't know if you want more of his explanation, but...
No, not really. But what I do want to know is, do you still believe 6,000 acre feet would supply our needs at build-out? Do you still think that as a staff?
I think, again, Mayor Combs and Councilmember Peck, unless we would undertake an update to those studies, I don't have any information that would suggest to me that the number is different than that. I think the question at hand, and again, you know, the Water Board looked at the information and came to a different conclusion, and I think it's a case of rational people can look at the same information and come to different outcomes. I think in the case of the staff, we looked at it based on the science and based on the studies that we did. Arguably, you could look at that data, and it's really sort of a risk analysis of where you sort of fall on that whole spectrum. It is my interpretation of it. Again, so I don't, I don't really want to sort of couch this as a difference of staff between Water Board, we're simply basing ours on the studies that we completed and the results of those studies.
So, I voted against the 10,000, because, number one, the rates, and because of staff's recommendation for six. So, when I talked to the Water Board, they gave so many reasons for participating in it, but the one reason I would like you to explain is that we sell raw water, or lease it, to what used to be the Public Service Company, but now it's Excel. And the, what the Water Board Chair said was that there is some concern that Excel will go someplace else to find that water cheaper, and we will lose that, but they're under contract with us. Now, can you tell me where that water is coming from now, that is going to Excel? Where's that raw water coming from?
So Mayor Combs and Councilmember Peck, the, I believe what you're referring to is the exchange agreement that we have with...
Yes.
Public Service Company of Colorado, which is a subsidiary of Excel, and I think that's for 5,000 units of CBT, that's, and I think it's a 75-year agreement, so it's a long-term agreement, and it's, and by, when I describe it as an exchange, the city is sending an equal amount of water to Excel for their use at their power plants downstream of us, and that water is either coming from Union, or it's coming from the city's wastewater treatment plant. And so, if, for instance, Public Service Company were to not want to renew or continue the agreement, well, then the city would hold back the water that we're currently exchanging with them through this agreement, and we'd either store that in Union for releases elsewhere, or we would have to implement the Union Pump Back Project. And again, we structured that agreement to give us plenty of time as a city to react in the event that that were to happen, but I think the agreement's been working very well for both the city and for Excel, because their ability to take delivery of their CBT units is difficult that far down the river. In other words, they were losing a lot of their yield by trying to get the water down, as opposed to working with Longmont, where we can deliver it to the river closer to where their plants actually take delivery. And that's why the agreement came about, that's why it makes sense for both parties.
And what does that have to do with Windy Gap? I don't understand where that connection is, because that's what the Chair said, why we need so much acre feet in Windy Gap, in Chimney Hollow.
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Peck, if I could add just a little to it, since I work real closely with the Water Board, I understand. So, here, in essence, what the Water Board was concerned about is that that agreement has a 15-year opt-out, either party can give the other party a 15-year notice. So, what the Water Board was concerned about is that we're projecting our future water supply, and including a water source that we could be told, in 15 years, you no longer have. Considering that right now, we're in year 18 of the Windy Gap Fermi Project, and we still got three to four more years, maybe five years, before we actually get wet water, it takes well over 20 years to get a project. So, the Water Board really felt, in their heart, that they wanted to make sure they were protecting Longmont's future water supply. To be honest, we have, you know, as Dale explained, we wouldn't just not use the water that we're currently delivering to them, we would work towards developing that into a water supply for Longmont, but it would require additional expenditure of money and additional work. So, the reason Water Board was concerned, and the reason Water Board brought forth that concern, as well as other concerns they had, the reason they recommended the 10,000 acre feet is they felt it was their, you know, kind of best, their job to really advise council and advise the community on their, they're very firm about wanting to have a great water supply, which has really benefited Longmont. So that's, that's why, that was their concern, really, was basing your water supply on a contract that could be terminated within 15 years. It is a 75-year contract, and we've got many, quite a few, about 50, over 50 years left on that contract, but that was their primary concern.
So, really, all of this is just based upon assumptions? You know?
Yeah, really, the process analysis by Water Board of, you know, looking at, looking at all the factors.
Okay, thank you.
Continue, sir, any more slides?
So, Mayor and Council, we are, we're done with the presentation on the, on the issues associated with the financing, and so, we would like to get some direction, if possible, tonight, and again, if you want to have a full contingent, that's certainly council's prerogative, but you'll recall, we were at the stage of second reading of the ordinances in December, and you tabled that action pending the 404 permit to be issued. That's been done, that's why we're in front of you, and so, we do have a series of options here. One of them would be that the updated ordinance could be substituted and voted on on second reading. The second bullet is that the updated ordinance can be substituted in a public hearing re-held. You've also re-helded the public hearing, and the ordinance voted on second reading. The third would be to update the ordinance and return for first reading on the ordinance, essentially going through the entire process. So if you have direction for us on that, it would be helpful, and the second bullet that we got down there is on the timing of the issuance. Again, if you want to stay with the plan whereby council would issue the $6 million in bond, we would like timing on bringing back the ordinance for that issuance.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I would like to have a full contingent before we make our final decision, but I would like to see numbers on if we went to the people for the full amount of the bond. I'd like to see that, and what rate increases would be if we did that. I'd like to have more data, so that we can make a better decision and have a full council. That would be my suggestion.
If I could just clarify, Councilmember Finley, do you want us to run the numbers on bonding the entire amount, or on bonding the difference between what we have in cash versus what we need? That's an important distinction. Or do you want us to do both, and come back with both of those scenarios?
I think both would be great.
We can do both.
More information's better.
Councilmember Christensen?
I believe the reason that we did a partial bond and a partial debt was that we didn't have to take it to a vote. If we do, if we bond the entire thing, it will have to be taken to a vote. I'm perfectly happy to see this go to a vote, I think it would be good for this, for the city to consider this. I still cannot support the 10,000 acre feet. I prefer the city staff's conservative and considered engineering risk assessment, and so, but I do think that it would be helpful to consider, as Councilman Finley said, full bonding.
Councilmember Santas?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'd be all right with what's been proposed. I would also say that we would need to update it on, go back to the first reading, but to have those numbers would be helpful. Something else I'll ask offline, for my own personal gratification, but, you know, it's, all this, even with the best science you got, is all based on assumptions, or assumptions. And as the mayor kind of said earlier, we do that a lot with everything that we do, so whether it's 10,000 acre feet, 8,000, 6,000, we're just, somehow or another, we're going to find a majority of council, or council 7-0, are going to say, this is the number we're going to participate at, and this is what we're going to have to do. I do, Dale, thank you for explaining the difference between the water over at Union and the high-quality water that we get from Windy Gap. There is a distinct, there is a huge distinction, and that needs to be clarified. And, pardon me, and yes, I don't like, not only would we be raising rates on residents of Longmont, but guess what? I'm a resident of Longmont, too. We raise rates on ourselves, and it's very difficult to do, whether it's a project like this, or just needed infrastructure and whatever fund that needs to occur, so. Now, I know it's a little bit more work for you, but, you know, I think those numbers would be adequate, and of course, having all seven members of council, this is an important decision.
So, based on that, I mean, we're going to, so the timing issue, the issues is important on this one.
Right, and the further we delay this, the more that rate increase is going to go up.
So we're going to go ahead and put this on the 27th agenda. I don't know how long it's going to take Becky to get her work done.
We'll be ready.
So, there is a possibility, we'll need to figure out the, somebody, am I seeing... Okay, so we will find a meeting when we're, as soon as possible, when we have everyone here, to have that conversation, that gives us a little bit of time to get the information ready. What I was going to say is if we were, I think Councilmember Finley said she's not, there may be a scheduling conflict there, so we will talk to council, find out when, make sure we have everyone, we will get the numbers.
Yeah, and we can even have a meeting that's, well, on a Tuesday, if we need to.
So, let us work that, and let's get it figured out.
Being an engineer, working with lots and lots of data, sometimes you have, you know, your medium line, but then you've got, you know, eight or nine different air sources, and sometimes those air sources are just RSSed, you know, they're uncorrelated, but sometimes two or three of them are correlated, and they move the needle in the same direction. That's the problem with this whole thing, and that's the hardest thing to explain to the public, and that's why, you know, I felt comfortable going to the higher level. I mean, I might revisit, you know, the 8,000-foot level, but I'm not comfortable going to the 6,000-foot level, because I really do think, in the end, 20 years from now, everybody's going to say, why did they not go to 10,000 feet? But that's just my two cents, you know, my personal feelings, just by looking at how complex numbers are that have multi-variables that you've got to deal with, because sometimes they're uncorrelated, and sometimes there's some correlation to them, so.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. I would support the full bond, of the full financing amount, and not support, still not support that 10,000 acre feet of water, mainly because staff recommended six, and I trust staff. That's what you recommended, you're the engineers, so if we could have the data on the 8,000 acre feet, that's worth looking at, too.
Is there, just to check for us, like, we can do that, we can certainly come back with those different numbers, is that the majority of you want to see that?
Yeah, I should look at it, doesn't mean we want to go there, but we'll look at it.
You want to see the data?
Want to know what we're voting on?
Just want to do what you want us to do. Alrighty. Well, we, as Harold said, it will take us a little bit of time, but I agree, it's important that we have all seven of you to make this decision. We hope you're all here at a meeting soon, and this may warrant coming back with just another discussion of all the data before we put an ordinance in front of you.
And the reason why, the reason I was going to talk about the 27th, what I was going to say is, the pack, it may be a little late trying to get all the information, but if you're willing to look at other options and what we know, then we can work that out.
Eugene, could we hold a special meeting? Eugene, could we hold a special meeting just for this, to make sure everybody's here?
Mayor and Council, Eugene May, City Attorney. Yes, we have procedures in the charter for convening a special meeting, and we can certainly exercise those.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Councilmember Moore?
Oh, sorry. That's a quick. I guess one of the things that we haven't touched on, actually, we have touched on, but what do we get out of an acre foot yield out of Windy Gap? What are we planning on?
I'll let Ken answer that. He's the expert.
Mayor and Councilmember Moore, the, what we call the firming ratio for the Windy Gap project is, for Longmont, is about 2.5 to 1. So, you need 2.5 acre feet for every acre foot of firm yield that you get. So, at 10,000 acre feet, we would essentially get 4,000 acre foot firm yield in the project.
So, 40 percent yield? Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So, when we say 10,000 acre feet, we're not going to receive 10,000 acre feet. We're anticipating 4,000 acre feet.
4,000 acre feet on a firm basis.
On a firm basis.
In an average year, you'll get your full 8,000 acre feet of Longmont that we have in the project.
Okay. And, yeah, I think, as a conservative planner on things like, necessities like water, I'm going to be wanting to stay with the 10,000 acre feet based on what my, I heard at the Water Board when I sit in those meetings. I mean, I think it's just really so important to have that high-quality water. It's going to be something that's going to be a long-term decision, and I do appreciate the fact that we want to have all the council here, so I guess that's for next time.
Councilmember Christensen?
Back to the bond sale, I do think that we should try to, if it's possible, prepare that for this November election, because we need to-
We would need to.
You would have to. We would have to do it for this November election. That's why there's-
Right.
-the timing issues of, we need to come back quick.
Okay. And people need to remember that if we bond the entire thing, it will be much more expensive than if we bond part and do part of it as cash debt, so.
Okay, Council, I think we got what we needed, and we appreciate your time tonight.
Okay. Now, it's time for final call. Public invited to be here. Anybody from the public would like to come down and speak at this time?
My name is Kelly Mahoney. I live at 708 Bluegrass Drive, 80503. I'm here to introduce Longmont Food Rescue. And as Executive Director of this nonprofit, I want to open the door to communication and how our organization is serving Longmont. Here's some data for you. Our country spends 10% of our national energy budget on food production. 50% of our land area is used for food production. 80% of our fresh water is used for food production. And yet, 40% of the food produced in the U.S. goes uneaten. 40%. Longmont Food Rescue's mission is to redistribute nutritious food that retailers have deemed as food waste to feed hungry, homeless, and low-income populations directly. The goal is to close the gap in food insecurity here in Longmont and surrounding mountain towns while simultaneously reducing landfill waste. We envision a food system built on the conscious collaboration of community members who are committed to a sustainable system of food practices. Longmont Food Rescue was established as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in January. Our just-in-time food rescue services makes us agile and allows us to get food to our recipients faster than others. Because of the reduced turnaround time between donation and delivery, more food is directed, and that food can be consumed within hours of donation. Longmont Food Rescue is focused on partnering with those nonprofits in town that currently do not or cannot receive any produce from other food redistributors. We're setting up participatory, no-cost, no-questions-asked grocery programs at our recipient sites. Our recipients are empowered to direct their own grocery programs. We bring the food and provide any help behind the scenes if asked by a recipient coordinator. We're looking forward to an equitable, community-based food redistribution environment for Longmont and close mountain towns. We need your involvement and community involvement to grow and sustain this movement. Since April, we've rescued 12,000, or 1,200 pounds of food, mostly bicycle and trailers. And Mayor Combs stopped by our breakfast table during Bike-to-Work Day at New Leaf Chiropractic in southwest Longmont. You could look us up at longmontfoodrescue.org and check out some pictures of our rock star volunteers picking up food donations and delivering on Facebook. So, thanks so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come speak?
Mayor and Council, Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive. I appreciate the conversation that you've had on the Windy Gap firming project tonight and some of the comments made. I do want to indicate, though, that when Ken indicated that the Water Board was looking at all the variables and trying to bring forward the very best risk-free water rate or water participation rate in the Windy Gap firming, they did not consider the impacts of rates on your residents. That wasn't part of their function.
No.
Your function, as elected representatives for all of us, is to consider that. And so, I am glad that you're reconsidering or at least looking and asking for more additional information, and I hope that as that comes forward, you might see that the Water Board is maybe too conservative and going way over here. And there's no reason to assume that all the expert analysis that was done by the consultants working for the city over years of trying to determine what the right firming amount was, that they're all wrong. They may be absolutely right, and 6,000 acre feet may survive all of us very well at buildout. So, there is something that you guys have to decide, to recognize that, but I do appreciate that you're willing to reconsider some of your assumptions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come speak? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. So, now it's time for council comments. Anybody from? Councilmember Christensen?
Oh, I have a few comments. I would like to, first of all, welcome Sopris Voyager Publications to town. They just moved here from Firestone, I think. And I am very grateful, because my dear old friend Mary and I can now go out and have cocktails all the time. But it's a good, it's a learning, it's a curriculum development and publishing company, and they're a terrific addition to the town. I also wanted to remind people that some of us have volunteered to get dunked. Councilman Bagley and I will be dunked at the Gay Pride Fest, so any of you who want to throw stuff at us, come along and feel free, except city council members. They are not allowed to throw anything at us.
Yeah, whatever.
Don't.
Lucky I'm out of town.
I want to thank Kelly Mahoney for talking about this. It's true, we waste an enormous amount of food, and we also ship at enormous distances. And I can tell you, my mother, and my aunts, and my grandmothers did not throw away a speck of food. We ate leftovers and pickings off of chickens, and many people need to sort of rethink how they relate to food, and so I thank her for what she's doing.
Well, I'd like, I realize I've got a scheduling conflict on July 22nd. I'm supposed to have coffee with council, with Councilmember Santos, and I'm also scheduled on a fundraiser for Courage Classic on that same Saturday, so I was wondering if I could maybe trade council days with somebody? Somebody could cover for me on July 22nd?
Maybe.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, everybody kind of look at their schedules and see if anybody could switch. Yeah, you can't trade, but, so, anyway, I decided. The other thing was, you know, we got a new bike shop in town, Longmont Bella over the shopping center at Francis, and I had, I normally do most of my bike maintenance, but I had to go to Seattle, and my shifters were all messed up, and I needed new housings and cables and whatnot, and I dropped it off there. And they did a fantastic job. That mechanic is just, that bike has never shifted crisp or even brand-new than what it does right now, so they got a really good bike mechanic at Longmont Bella, so just thought I'd pass that out. It's my business of the week. So, I guess, Councilmember Finley?
I have a business of the week. This just fascinated me. It is Mikes Drones and More LLC. They take aerial photograph of commercial and residential properties and special events, anything you need drone to, you know, to take pictures of. And they're new in town, Mikes, Drones, and More. So, if you need some aerial photography, give them a call.
City manager, any comments?
Mayor and Council, I do have a comment tonight. Valerie will kill me if I don't remember this. Want to remind everyone that we have board and commission interviews tomorrow for council. The first interview starts at 6:00. A light meal will be available at 5:30.
City Attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.